Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 6th, 2025 meeting of the Northampton City Council. I'm Alex Jarrett, City Council President. I'll be presiding this evening along with Vice President Rachel Maori, who is expected shortly. The meeting and all participating in person and on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. The meeting can also be watched on Comcast Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube channel. I now call the City Council to order. Can you take the role, please?
Counselor Dobbs.
Here.
Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Clemmer.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori, I don't see yet. Don't see her virtually. Counselor Moulton.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
And Counselor Rothenberg.
Here.
Council President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's highlights include an order to make a $600,000 media appropriation to Northampton Public Schools. First on the agenda are announcements of public hearings, and the first is an announcement of public hearing on 24.212 Comcast Petition to Install Underground Conduit for Cable Service to 130 to 140 Woodland Drive. So we will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 20th at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. And this is on a petition to install underground conduit for that address. Instructions for accessing the hearing remotely may be found on the March 20th City Council agenda to be posted on northhamptonma.gov no later than 48 hours prior to the meeting, and the City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. The second is an announcement of a public hearing on 24.213, which is National Grid/Verizon's Poll Petition for Park Hill Road. That will be Thursday, March 20th at 6:35 PM, and it's to install one jointly owned pole on Park Hill Road, approximately 240 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Whittier Street. The last is an announcement of a public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2026 water and sewer rates. We will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 20th at 6:40 PM to consider proposed water and sewer rates for fiscal year '26. Next is public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, you can sign up on the sheet at the podium, and if you're on Zoom, you use the raise hand feature, which is in the bottom menu bar by reactions. Or it's rather you click on react and then raise hand. If you're having trouble raising your virtual hand, you can turn on your video and physically raise your hand. If you want to submit a written public comment, you can email it to citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. It will be sent to all councilors and will be part of the public record. So I'm going to alternate between people in the room and people on Zoom, and before you begin, state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to a maximum of two minutes and 90 minutes in total. And after two minutes, we will ask you to please finish your sentence. Council rules state that we don't, we aren't allowed to respond during public comment. It is your time to speak to us. Our rules also state that councilors and members of the public, members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Your protected speech is a constitutional right and one that we ask you to wield with consideration and respect for all and with recognition that the public space that grants you that freedom is shared equally by everyone. You may speak on any topic. Doesn't need to be an item on the agenda, and all comments are to be directed to the council. So we'll start in the room, and is Andrew Goodman, Andrew Mando Goodman? Oh, okay.
Oh, it's on. Hi, I'm Andrew Goodman, and I'm in second grade at Jackson Street School. Ms. Fomsley is my teacher. I'm here to talk about what it's like to be in class with 26 kids. It's very loud, even when people aren't yelling. Sometimes I can't hear the teacher and miss some instruction. Since there's so many people asking questions, it's hard to get attention. I think we should have smaller classes, and I know some people disagree with that. I know the city has money and the city can pay for other things, but please give money to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Katie.
Hello. Andrew, good job. My name is Katie DiLorenzo. I live in Ward Five and have two kids, one at JFK and one in a no-faceted second grade classroom at Jackson Street. I've talked to you before about the harm my son is shouldering because of your choices to house him in a room with 36 kids with his dyslexia. But today I want to focus on the budget. I'm hearing we don't have the money now, or we have the money now, but we won't have the money next year. But I'm confident either way we will have to pay. By not providing funding and mass support for our youngest learners, by not having reasonably sized classrooms that allow kids to learn, by not having paras to keep the rooms safe, kids will fall farther and farther behind. Eventually, these kids will need evaluations because they will not be able to accept, to access this year's curriculums, and we will pay. Some kids will qualify for IUPs, and we will pay. We're already not meeting the current IUP service grants. Families will seek out of district placements, which are incredibly expensive, and we will pay. Families will sue the district for being out of compliance with their IUPs, and we will pay. Families will fight for contracted tutors because we don't have in-house supports, and we will pay. Families will leave the public schools for the charter schools at higher rates, and we will pay. It's not a matter of how much we will pay, but when we will pay. Paying now allows us to foster a supportive environment for the kids, the teachers, the community. Paying later will come at a higher cost, a slow gutting of our kids, our teachers, our community, a distrust of the city's values, and continued harm to our children. And to be clear, especially to our most vulnerable kids, our kids with learning disabilities, our poor kids, our black kids, our brown kids, our English as a Second Language kids who already are paying such a high cost. So please support us for us now.
Thank you. Ian Goodman.
It's a little sad that I don't have to raise the microphone so much for my eight-year-old. My name is Ian Goodman. I'm in Northampton, Massachusetts. God, my eight-year-old just told you what it was like to be in a classroom with 26 kids. We've told you the consequences of the decisions that you made at budget time last year. You set our school system on fire. We're harming children. It's a crisis. These children are not okay. These teachers are not okay. You set the school district on fire, and now you're arguing about how to use the hose. Fund the schools. Begin to repair the damage that you caused. It's only right.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Beth. Beth, your name and city or town, please.
Hi, my name is Beth Rogers. I'm a resident of Northampton, Ward Four. In 2018, the former mayor of Northampton made an executive policy order to eliminate any and all ties to the nuclear weapons industry. That executive order states that the city shall not contract with companies that are directly involved in the manufacture and maintenance of nuclear weapons. L-3 Harris Technologies provides flight test instrumentation support and services for the Trident II, which is a sea-launched ballistic missile that quote "delivers nuclear warheads." That's quoted from the U.S. Navy Strategic Systems Program Office. In July 2023, L-3 Harris also acquired Aerojet Rocketdyne, which is one of the members of Northrop Grumman's nationwide team that is currently building the new U.S. intercontinental ballistic missile. The direct ties to the nuclear weapons industry could not be more clear, which means that L-3 Harris is in direct violation of a standing city ordinance. Furthermore, the city of Northampton recently passed a resolution calling for an aid to U.S. military, or an end to U.S. military aid to Israel, and there's clear evidence that L-3 Harris is developing weapons, technologies that are being sold to the Israeli military to bomb innocent civilians and children in Gaza. So it's very clear that having L-3 Harris in Northampton goes against our city's values as well as my own, and I urge the mayor and the council to revoke their business certificate, which is, it's currently going to be up for renewal in April, and to also support a full weapons ban for the city of Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, but if, in the end. Chelsea Feria.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Chelsea Feria, and I live in Northampton. I've lived here since about 2012, and on behalf of myself and a lot of other peace and justice activists in the area, I implore the City Council to not renew the license that permits L-3 Harris, the weapons contractor, to operate a production plant here in Northampton. A year ago, we called on L-3 to stop enabling the genocide against the Palestinian people by sending weapons to Israel in violation of U.S. law. We received no response, and L-3 continues to supply Israel. L-3 also makes parts for, among other things, nuclear weapons, as just mentioned, for killer drones and for border surveillance in Palestine on the U.S.-Mexico border and elsewhere. L-3 is toxic to our community and to Western Massachusetts, and since it refuses to produce things that we need to restore health to our planet, it must leave our community.
Thank you. Next on Zoom, Maritha Wallace.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I hope that you are having a pleasant evening. I'm sorry, my camera is, for whatever reason, is not up coming undone, but here is something I just wanted to say for tonight. I'm extremely frustrated as an educator, as someone who has worked in this district for 10 years, who really feels like she has brought in diversity, equity, and inclusion with just being who I am and walking in with my black gay self. However, when I speak, it's not to cause divisiveness, although sometimes that is what happens. But even as I learned more about the Reverend Dr. King, not everybody agreed with him. And in fact, he had people like Malcolm X, who were dioplosically, they had the same goal, but how they got there was differently, different. So if speaking truth to power is divisive, I can take that. I can own that. I'm not trying to be divisive. I'm trying to make a part of something that you all, many of you of whom are white, cannot necessarily see. And I, who's speaking as a person of color, who it does affect immensely as I watch kids. So it might not be your problem, but it is most definitely mine because I work with those students. those students. And so when I am telling you there's a problem and am met with, well, it doesn't affect me, but it does affect people who I teach, who I work with, and we really need to look beyond ourselves so that everybody is included. I finally just want to say this. The educators in this district are A-plus. Every last one of them don't have a negative thing to say about any of them because we work hard and every day we do whatever we want with us outside, and we walk through the doors, and it would be nice.
That's time if you could finish your sentence.
I will finish my sentence. When we speak, that too listen, not scrolling on your computers or rolling your eyes. Thank you so much, and have a pleasant evening.
And your city or town?
I currently live in Sundownland, Massachusetts, but I've worked at JFK for the last 10 years.
Thank you.
Could you make it a close? Let me get a chance, just, could you make it a close?
Garav Jashnani. Welcome.
I'm here as a parent to express how disappointed, sorry, Ward Six. Can I start my time? Is that all right? I'm here as a parent to express how disappointed I am in the council and your committee meeting last night. Councilor Elkins, you're a counselor-at-large, you represent me. What does being a dedicated progressive mean to you? What constitutes working toward a racially just and equitable Northampton? As you say on your website, does it mean undermining children of color like mine in our school system? Does it mean allowing English-language learners little to no chance of learning English because we won't use revenue to hire enough school staff? Let me offer my expertise to you. Among other things, I'm an academic researcher. My scholarship has focused on institutional racism in education and policing. What I see in our schools right now is 100% clearly, absolutely institutional racism. What do you think happens to children when we take away their opportunities for a decent education? You all may feel good about the reparations committee, but talking about the past doesn't make up for perpetrating racist harm in the present. To councilors Elkins and Moulton, you all may want collaboration, you say you do, but you refused to meet, I was astonished, you refused to meet with the school committee subgroup because you were mad that Mike Stein criticized one of you for saying something flip and callous during an official meeting? Do you not understand that it's your job to run this city? Do you think your white feelings are more important than our children's futures than my brown disabled child's future? More important than the 53% of Bridge Street students who are low-income and disproportionately students of color? Right now, you have a chance to address deeply harmful institutional racism and ableism, to correct fiscal decisions that are incredibly harmful to poor and to immigrant children. What so-called progressive would vote against providing money for kids to learn how to read? The city paid for Ninja Turtle manhole covers. We approve medium and low-priority capital projects. What are your priorities? My last sentence, it's not too late to turn the page. If you say you're a progressive, then please act like one and please vote like one so that our city can function. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Terry Reynolds. Your name and city or town, please.
My name is Terry Reynolds. I live in Torrance. And I'm calling just in because I wanted to mention about DPW funding. Over the past few storms and generally in terms of city funding for DPW efforts, really appears to be very lacking, and I just wanted to say that I think it's something that really needs to be addressed. Our snowstorms, we don't have enough staff to plow the roads, and this has been a consistent issue where roads are getting half-plowed and then had to wait for it to melt instead of going ahead and finishing the plowing. This last storm was a great example where it took a week for the ice to melt because there was only a partial plowing mid-storm, and then the entire area froze following that. It took a week to finally salt and sand the roads so that they were actually safe to pass. Where I live in Jay State Village, it was one lane, people were almost crashing into each other. I couldn't even drive into my driveway because of the ice ruts, never mind ambulance service or anything else trying to get into people's property. So I just want to say that the lack of funding for DPW, whether it be to resurface roads, to build sidewalks as they're mandated, really needs to be addressed. That's it.
Thank you. In the room, Dan. Welcome. Your name and city or town, please.
I'm not going to use this. Okay. Dan Brian Daley lived down the street at 22 Phillips Place, across from where O'Connell has now planned a 54-unit apartment complex towering over our residential neighborhood. 54 units, but only 27 parking spots, 100 new neighbors quadrupling the residents, exploding traffic, parking, garbage, sewer, internet, emissions, noise, many of which are already at capacity. They know this, they've been in the neighborhood for a decade, parking so bad I can't get my car out, and our street is an essential truck detour. We need to get oil delivered, our kids to school, get to the hospital. O'Connell has zero plans to adequately increase capacities, in large part exacerbating them. Their only response is that zoning change is now permitted. This doesn't live up to our progressive or environmental ideals. Their two now stalled projects are lifeless mud fields of stagnant water and rusty nails. Construction detritus and emissions blow onto our yard often. This will block neighbor solar panels and views of Northampton's actual assets, trains, homes, plants, and wildlife stars at night. Nearly every window of my 1850s home will look onto a prefab brick wall. A block of small, expensive rental units does nothing to increase housing stock or bring down costs. It encourages developers to pursue similar apartment projects, boxing out regular families trying to buy a home to live in. Market rate is not only not affordable, but drives up all rents and fuels evictions. Dense rental buildings are the worst tax-to-burden ratio. Expensive no-parking-studio apartments are sure to be full of rooftop partying kids. I've seen the same exact prefab building built in every formerly affordable New York City neighborhood that I was forced out of by similar slipshot overdevelopment. Any claim that more residents will rejuvenate the downtown is insane, we all know. Empty storefronts and the vacant venues are all owned by the same incompetent landlords. Spalletto's has been open since 2012. Don't allow the heart of Paradise City to rot and move the city into my neighborhood. Whatever O'Connell originally sold this town, many years later, two sites stalled out, unfinished eyesores, it's not going to happen. My family and I are trying to build something here. We own our land. Don't allow us to be put at the bottom of a 70-foot wall where our neighborhood overloaded to death. O'Connell is desperate to make their awful investment make money, and will do so on all of our backs if permitted. With zoning protections gone, this legislative council is our only line of defense. Zoning laws protect houses, towns, and developers from impossible problems. Inaccurate zoning hurts everyone. We're not a downtown-city street. We're not built to sustain big, high-density urban projects. We have old tumbling houses, narrow streets, and open lawns and driveways, all built before a building like this was ever imagined. I am asking this panel to swiftly reinstate the essential common sense zoning protections that have protected my house and its residents for all of these years until now and before it's too late because cramming a building like this into a neighborhood like mine is disastrous and destructive.
Thank you.
Sorry, I mean.
Thanks. Next on Zoom is Nathan.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Your name and city or town, please.
Nathan Chung, Northampton resident. Yeah, I'm going to do something positive. I'm actually Holyoke right now. Attending a workshop will encourage more worker-owned businesses, cooperative business in the region, and that's the thing I'll talk about. So I think a lot of research shows that income and wealth are one of the biggest determinants of student performance. So if you want to really talk about holistic solution to improving student performance, you can't just look at the schools alone, but you've got to look at the whole community, how is equity should be wealth and income. Yeah, Holyoke, last 2023 data, Holyoke's household income median is $52,000 roughly. Northampton is about $7,000 to $8,000, I believe. So, and the other thing is infrastructure that matters a lot for Barba, too. Holyoke is on the hook for a $27 million EPA fine because there's a lot of political pressure to keep the sewer rates artificially low, so there was improper maintenance and a lot of sewer overflow. And just want everybody to think about that, and I just want to express my appreciation for city officials and the city council, who are in the very difficult task of balancing all the different needs, the finances, the safety, the proper function of different departments. So I just want to thank everybody, and I know you get insulted, I know you're getting a lot of hate, but ultimately, at the end, a lot of people appreciate what you do, and don't let anybody sacrifice your dignity and your humanity for their political agendas, even if they're well-intentioned. I don't think a lot of people are seeing the whole and only really focusing on their own problems. So have a good night, and I just want to say, go Northampton and also go Holyoke. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In the room, Deb Henson.
Thank you. Somebody left their notes up here, but I won't deal with that. Last time I spoke, I'm Deb Henson from Northampton in Ward One. Last time I spoke with you, I kind of spoke with you as my social worker hat. Those of you who know me know I'm also a lawyer. And after listening to all the comments last night at the finance committee, that lawyer part of me came out. And I know it's always boring when we talk about the law, but you heard from people both two weeks ago and then last night, those of you in the finance committee, that the schools are in violation of federal law. So my little lawyer brain got kind of curious, and I said, well, let me look into the state law. And I just wanted to share with you something that I think is very important in your decision tonight. You were asked by the school committee for a $600,000 mid-year appropriation. And as we heard last night, the importance of this appropriation at this time of the year, even though it's a difficult time to fund and maybe a difficult time to get everybody organized, is crucial to some of the kids that are failing so behind. So boring lawyer stuff, I wanted to look at the powers and the duties of the school committee. Because last night, I was shocked and amazed that the directive to the superintendent, who is, by the way, the school committee's employee, was modified during the discussions, watered down to less than half of what the school committee, who is charged with this responsibility, authorized her to convey and to ask for. So I will just share with you a little bit of law. It's Massachusetts General Laws, I'll speak fast like he did, and the Massachusetts Desi Board, you all know that, but Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 34, and now I'll slow down, covers general duties of the school committee. School committee of each city and town have general charge of and responsibility for the public schools of the city or town, blah, 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 and shall have authority to make rules and regulations. That can't be two minutes.
If you could finish your sentence.
I just have one more citation. Chapter 71 is regarding budgets, which is what we're particularly concerned with tonight. Chapter 71, 30, section.
That's time. Sorry, you can feel free to send us information.
Should I just submit this? Yes. So my closing thing was just.
Or you can submit the document to our.
Who do I give that to?
Do what is.
To Laura.
Under the law.
So that she can distribute it.
And for our kids.
Next on Zoom is Din. Your name and city or town, please.
My name is Jennifer James, and I'm a resident of the city of Northampton. I'm publicly commenting to reiterate my support that I've both written and publicly commented to have the city approve the mid-year appropriation to the schools. I support all the comments that have already come, and I'm just going to repeat the three questions that I asked last night. My questions were, which city councillor has ever run a classroom, hired a teacher, or monitored a recess? Why can't you trust our talented principals to make good staffing decisions with funds that are available? And lastly, why is our city dismantling its public schools? Those are my questions, and I really hope that you can approve this mid-year appropriation that's less than half of what was originally approved by our school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laurie Loizell from Northampton. I'm here to talk about context. I don't question anybody's experience of their child's school or whether teachers don't have all they need to educate their children, but there is a critical context here that we really can't ignore. Amherst and Belchertown are looking at budget shortfalls that raise the specter of layoffs. Other local schools are in that situation. A recent Boston Globe story called the closure of one elementary school in the state a precarious situation, highlighting the bleak financial picture many Massachusetts districts are again confronting as they grapple with inflation, rising costs for special education, health insurance, transportation, as well as the loss of federal pandemic aid and state assistance that fails to keep pace with costs. The point is, Northampton is not alone. Yet there's a campaign in our city to fault one person for the situation we face as a community. It's a systemic problem. It's the kind of problem that is hard to fix, so it's easier to villainize someone. But that's simplistic, it's incorrect. Blaming the mayor without looking at entrenched problems like inflation, funding formulas, unintended consequences of pandemic funding spent without a good plan means we are not effectively addressing the problems we face. The suffering of students is a tragedy. It is happening in every city and town across the state for a host of reasons. If we are distracted by an easy scapegoat, we fail to address the real problem, and in that void, a tragedy turns into a crisis.
Thank you. On Zoom, we have Shelby. Your name and city or town, please.
Hi, yeah, my name is Shelby Von Rosenbach, and I am in Ward One, here with a three-year-old and a kindergartner at Jackson Street. I've been listening to these meetings for about a year, and I want to state my support for the appropriation, and also thank everyone who's been coming to every one of these meetings, doing public comment, keeping track of what's going on here. And I want to let city council know that, while it may feel like a small group of people making demands, I can assure you that it's not a small group of people who want Northampton Public Schools to be a functional, safe place for our kids. It's just that many of us don't have the bandwidth to keep up with the saga. Kids' bedtimes are happening right now, and I just pushed a three-year-old, my kindergartner, out of the room to state this comment. So just want you to know, there's lots of parents who can't count to these meetings, can't stay up till midnight listening to you guys debate things, and we also are just part of this group that wants you to fund our schools. So thanks.
Thank you. Meg.
Hi, Meg Robbins, Ward Four, and I'm coming to talk to you because I've been trying to get hold of you by email, and I haven't gotten any responses. I've written a couple of times to a few of you who last year, in May, said that you needed more time to learn more about opting in to Chapter 329, the 1987 clause that allows you to increase the amount of the budget that the mayor gives you. And I'm just going to read you the letter that I sent to you in case you didn't get a chance to read it when I did send it to you twice. Dear councilors, I'm writing to ask you each to please honor your statements made last May 16, 2024, in council to review opting in to Chapter 44, Section 32, by putting it on the council agenda as soon as possible. This allows you, by two-thirds vote, to increase the amount given to you in the budget, on a budget submitted to you by the school committee. Each of you stated that you needed more time to review this option last May 2024, but months have passed. Many towns and cities in the Commonwealth have voted to opt into this legislation. One of you told the public last year that opting in would create chaos and bad budgetary behavior for the school committee. One of you read opting in as analogous to not trusting the mayor. You all said you needed more time to study this, and I wonder what that process has been and what you have taken away from those months of inquiry. I do not believe that council has any oversight on school committee behavior, as it is a separate branch of our government. In our city, school committee brings council a budget that they feel is what they need to do the work of running the schools. Then logically, council should have the means to address that. Then logically, council should have the means to address that as a part of functioning democratic system. Democracy is poorly served when one official holds that solo responsibility. You and the school committee serve as an integral part of that check and balance. Thank you for your attention and bringing this to you for reconsideration. Happy to offer additional information, and I would really appreciate it if you would respond to constituents when they write to you by email. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Michaela Roncom, a citizen of Northampton, Ward One. I have two kids at Jackson, one of which has been affected by the excessive size of the second grade class. So I would say that tonight, you are lucky to have such an easy decision to make. The indication by the school committee is clear, the need to increase the funding of our school is clear. You can count on the support of several volunteers in the community who are spending their free time to suggest solutions, right, with no compensation, but also because they have no other choice, right? They need to spend their own time. We're not coming here for fun, right? We're taking time away from our family, right, with no compensation. So pretty much, I would like you to please ask you to vote in favor for a $600,000 appropriation and work collaborative to properly fund the schools and the other essential services, because it's not an us versus them, right? It takes a village, right, to raise children. It takes a village. So we are a village, so let's work together to work at the possibility to obtain how we can budget all the essential services together, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mando. Your name and city or town, please.
I'm a Northampton Mandalorian. I live right here, locally in Northampton. I live in Ward Three, I believe. I live on Pleasant Street. I've only been a resident for about a year. As a single father, it's tough. It's a horrible, shitty, scary world, as some of the previous people have talked about, the Israel-Gaza stuff. Schools are our children's lifeline. Children are the future. You have to give them all the tools to succeed. It's very simple. If we had been given more, who knows what we could have achieved? I think inside, all of us still kind of want to be a kid. I know I do, obviously. I put this on because it makes people smile and laugh. It's a shitty, horrible world. If you can make one person smile and laugh, then you've made a better day for them, right? But funding for schools is really a no-brainer. You have to give them the tools to succeed. Children are challenged every day from numerous unimaginable horrors that we didn't have growing up, right? It's a scary world. Make the simple decision, give the children the money for the schools.
Next on Zoom is Indy.
Hello. Hold on, hold on. I'm going to attempt to do this.
Sorry, can you start over? There was some noise here. Your name and city or town, please.
Indy, I'm calling from Northampton. I live in West Hampton, and I'm calling again to urge the council not to renew our business license when it comes to deliberation in April, and also calling in support of the schools. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. All right. Oh, no. Would anyone else like to speak? Andrea?
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, canceled.
I live in Ward Five of Northampton, and I'm the co-chair of the Western Mass Club of the Communist Party USA. We have a lot to cover in two minutes, so I'll start with the matter of decorum raised by councillor Clemmer on the February 20th City Council meeting. It is interesting, councillor, to be chastised for perceived disrespectful behavior in council chambers, considering your support for a mayor who sends emails and browses the internet during public comment. Are you sure? This is the moment you want to start setting ground rules for conduct. Why don't we start right there? But I think the question of respect is an important one, so let's stick with it for a second. It is, after all, a matter of public dignity that our schools have come to attack in this way, in failing to fulfill IEPs, in stranding our ELL students, in defunding essential programs and consequent expansion of local charter schools. We are indeed facing a profound crisis of respect here in Northampton. This crisis has many facets. It's an issue of respect when decisions on budgetary matters are made in deference to the mayor's appointed group of technocrats, without once consulting teachers, staff, and paraeducators in our public schools. It's an issue of respect when the primary representative of the schools in these decisions is a superintendent in whom 96% of NACE members voted no confidence, who advocates against their adequate funding and dares to lecture our teachers on their work attendance. When working people are excluded from municipal process and our public officials think that their emails are more important than our lives, that is an issue of respect, and you better believe you're going to feel it come November. While I have the floor, I would also like to address the issue of methodology, and I should note that the questions of process that were, that questions of process were never once raised about the $18 million capital improvements program that was developed behind closed doors, as councillor Elkins and Mayor Shira can certainly attest. Recall that SOS originally sought an appropriation of roughly $2 million for level services. While some elected representatives seem to believe we should apologize for it, I am proud of our community. We've been clear in presenting the urgency of the situation in human terms, as a crisis of democracy, racial justice, women's rights, disabled justice. And we have also told the truth of how our sky-high budget surplus has come from systematic underfunding of public services. Tonight is yet another chance for our council to take a preliminary step in correcting its course. I urge you to vote yes on the mid-year appropriation. As we all know, the struggle for respect did not start here, and it's not stopping here either.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Kristin.
Hi, Kristin Eldian-Race Sylvester. I'm reading on behalf of both of us. We live at 70 Fern Street in Florence. I'm going to read part of the letter that I shared recently with the council. Hello, we're joining the many others you're hearing from to ask that you please use your voice and authority to send the full mid-year appropriation to NPS. The need is all the more urgent, given the recent failure of the ESE to block their charter school expansion and PVPA reduction in Sunview districts, a staggering blow to our district and to several other districts in Western Mass. As we all have been made aware of during the public comment period, meeting after meeting, NPS educators are so stressed. We know that many are struggling hard to support our students in the ways they need and deserve, and in the case of some of our most vulnerable students, are legally entitled to. Our educators need help. They need more coworkers, and not just for the sake of our town's kids, but because they, our school's hardworking teachers and staff, also deserve to be treated with care and compassion. After too long of not getting the relief they need, our educators are starting to quit our district altogether, as we recently saw in the resignation of three special education teachers, special education staff members at BSS, and special education teacher Jessica Taries announced departure from JFK, all of them providing invaluable support to our students and families. But again, they needed more help, help that city leadership continues to consciously withhold. As parents of an autistic sixth grader at JFK, we are feeling increasingly anxious about both the near and long-term impacts of remaining in a district whose leaders' actions don't reflect a commitment to meeting the needs of its special education students, who are more likely to have other marginalized identities as well, making this an equity issue compounded. We dearly want to keep our kid in, our kid in, and continue to support Northampton Public Schools, but the unwillingness to properly fund when we have the option to do so is making this an increasingly fraught decision. We are deeply grateful to our local elected to have continued to advocate for the adequate resourcing of our public schools. To those of you who have been reluctant, not because of lack of courage, but because we're in very, in fear of things getting even worse than they are now.
That was time if you could finish your sentence.
Okay, I'll just, the lessons. Please shift gears and choose to make the compassionate and equitable decision to more fully fund our schools, our deeply hurting public schools. We know that the $600,000 are certainly not the lower amount that is enough to get us where we need to be, but it will help us work toward sustainable full funding for the only type of school system our country has known with the potential to serve all students adequately, or even eventually.
That is time, but if the other person there wants to take two minutes, they may.
It's okay. Rick does it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Andrea Bertini, Florence, Mass. At the Curriculum Subcommittee the other night, it was acknowledged there's a massive literacy crisis for the kids at JFK. You've heard educators in many public comments say they are rationing, rationing reading intervention at the younger grades, and many kids aren't getting the help they desperately need. Hundreds of these kids who experienced this rationing of resources from the start of the failed wins model and got no intervention or identification in the early grades are now sitting at the middle school functionally illiterate. There are no resources being allocated to them, no care, concern, or plan to address these kids. They need your help, they need your action. And as I sit here, I want to thank the city council members who have actively been listening to the public comment. And while I heard a prior public comment regarding villainizing the mayor, it's really disheartening to have kids, my own kids, who have been harmed by these budget cuts and staffing cuts, to have personally experienced the rationing of services and to be sitting behind the mayor and watching her scroll through websites and documents and not listening to any of us. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, Haley Pearl.
Hi, I have a baby, and I'm talking about dystopia at the same time, so. I'm Haley Pearl, Ward Six, and I'm a Northampton High School English teacher. How many times have you heard lately that things feel dystopian or maybe Orwellian? Speculative fiction and science fiction are hugely popular for a reason. As Neil Gaiman wrote in his 2013 introduction to Bradbury's Fahrenheit 451, "People think that speculative fiction is about predicting the future, but it isn't. What speculative fiction is really good at is the present. It's cautionary." He argues that three simple phrases guide authors who write in this genre. The first is "what if." Quote, "What if change gives us change, a departure from our lives? What if aliens land tomorrow and give us everything we want, but at a price? For our purposes, what if schools were treated like capital projects? Or what if we all practice the values we claim on long sides?" The next phrase is "if only." "If only let's us explore the glories and dangers of tomorrow. If only dogs could talk, or if only I were invisible. For our purposes, if only our city saw human capital as equally important as capital gains. Or if only all our children could have an education worthy of their breathtaking potential." The last phrase is "if this goes on." Quote, "This type of fiction takes a troubling element of life and asks what would happen if that thing became all pervasive. If this goes on, all communication will be through text and face-to-face will be outlawed. Or for our purposes, if this goes on, we will graduate multiple generations of students who are not equipped with the skills to untangle the increasingly dystopian world we live in. This can't go on. The next time you say or hear something about this time being dystopian, I hope you remember to move beyond passive observation. You are being issued a warning, an invitation to use your power to help avert calamity, not invited."
Thank you. Would anyone else in the room like to speak?
Hi, everyone. Andrew Klusterman, Northampton, Ward One. Sorry, I was a little bit late today. I was also helping with kids at bedtime, and I just want to echo something that was earlier said, that there's a lot of people that are here, but there's also just a lot of people I've been talking to in the school system who are all, all in favor of this appropriation, and so I just want to, you know, urge you to vote yes. And I'm just going to leave it at that, because I think everyone else has said everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in the room? Come on up.
I'm Puja Daskupda, Ward Two. I want to speak about this from a different angle, actually as a researcher who does research on learning motivation persistence, especially in the context of STEM, science, math, and STEM education. So childhood and adolescence is a critical period in human brain development, in learning, in acquiring socio-emotional skills. Children who get enough time and attention from teachers at younger ages need less support later on. But if their teachers are stretched thin because of large class sizes, disruption in class, both academic learning and socio-emotional learning is greatly undermined. For kids who have special needs, whatever kinds of special needs, learning disabilities, English language learners, mental health needs, they're particularly vulnerable. The thing about human development is that you cannot rewind the clock. Later intervention is much more difficult, costly, and sometimes impossible. And that's why the mid-year appropriation for the $600,000 K is far better than waiting till next September. A six-month deficit in learning in an adolescent or early childhood life is a really long gap in brain development. And I've heard teachers and principals advocate for the $600,000, but last night, I heard the school superintendent advocate for less than $300,000. And that gap just doesn't make sense to me. So I want to tell you what I believe to be true, based on the data I collected at schools nationwide. When I've looked at measured student learning motivation and persistence in middle schools across the country, coast to coast, the best data on student success came from students themselves and from teachers and parents. Because teachers and parents have direct, authentic relationships with students, their insights were significant predictors how students were actually doing, not higher-level administrators. So my advice to you is listen to your teachers. If they say they need $600,000, that sufficient number of teaching staff to support their kids, give them the money. Remember, you cannot rewind the clock. You may be able to repair a street, or a bridge, or a roof. You cannot repair a human brain. Give them the money.
Anyone else? Kathy?
Alex.
Welcome.
Hey, Dan. Hi, everybody. I'm Kathy McNally, Northampton. A previous speaker tonight said a couple of really surprising things. She was talking about, she said she wanted to talk about context, and she told us that many, many communities in the state are having severe school problems. Totally agree with that. That is right on. And I think the point of it was, hey, this is a general problem. It's not that we're unusual. But I wonder about that, how many of the towns, and I know that the towns in Massachusetts, many of them have been having a good couple of years, investments-wise and in other ways, and I wonder how many of them are making a choice to underfund the schools like Northampton is. And then I wonder, when that person then, well, I guess that, to me, is like a fancy way of saying, hey, everybody, shush, shush, don't talk about it, because everyone in the state is having it, right? There's nothing we can do. And that doesn't feel like a very empowering message for citizens. Next, the speaker said that one group in the town, and I guess it must, you know, rhyme with SOS, and that we're harassing one person. Now, we have a mayor who creates policy. That mayor and our strong mayor system is the person who creates policy. That is the person. We're not a gang of toughs, kind of like abusing an old woman trying to cross the street. I'm the old woman. I'm not in a gang of toughs. I would love to be, but I'm not. So we're just a bunch of nerds, basically, who are willing to work a lot and, you know, look at everything, every budget in the state, everything, such boring stuff, to find a way to educate the kids in this town. And finally, I want to say, many of you are going to the resist rally, and Debbie and Rachel and I did rallies in resistance, but aren't we resisting? Isn't it okay to resist if it's in your own town? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in person or on Zoom? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to announcements from councillors and the mayor.
Kathy, thank you for the humor. I wanted to just hold space for a minute for the public comment that we received tonight. Boujous, almost made me cry, that you can't repair the brain, that the six months is so long, because I also know about your scholarship and your work and your credentials, so I take that fully as fact, and I'll look forward to talking to you some more about what you were looking at when you found that. What I feel and what I hear in the community at this juncture, a year into this conversation, it feels like a dull throbbing. It feels. It feels arduous. And you show up again and again and again, and we make new friends every day. And a lot of you are the same people showing up again and again and again. I wonder when the last time that was in Northampton, that so many of the same people showed up to every single meeting for a year. It speaks volumes. And I know that it can feel like we don't have a chance of success, right? A snowball's chance in hell. And it can be hard to have hope, and it helps to have humor. But I want to make sure that you all are remembering your hope, right? Because this room, the power in this room is held by a small group with loud voices, the people at these tables. But this community is rich with people who are very serious about our resources and how we use them. And we heard tonight about the DPW, and we heard about the schools, and we heard that we want our money to be clean and virtuous and not come from weapons manufacturing. This is a community of principals, very high principals. And don't you ever forget it. Even though you're looking at us up here, I'm looking at you, and you are beautiful.
Councilor Clemmer.
At the Community Resource Meeting on March 17th, from 5:30 to 7:00, Jim Nash will be speaking about POP, Part in Our Progress, and let us know about updates and what's going on and timeline, and answer any questions anybody has about it. It'll be hybrid and in-person.
Thank you. Councilors, any announcements? Mayor, do you have anything for us?
I was hoping that Councilor Perry was going to talk about Back Porch because I didn't pull it up. Do you have the information?
Sure, I will. Sorry.
I was thinking on it, obviously.
Just here. So this weekend is Back Porch Festival. Northampton will hopefully be bustling and alive in a way that I think it hasn't been in a while. There's going to be 10 venues participating. We have a ton of local sponsors who are going to be here, just moving throughout the city. So I hope it's going to be a beautiful weekend. You can find more if you go to backporchfest.com. There's an app you can download from the iTunes Store, and I believe Google has one as well. It lists all of the venues and all of the events. There's a time you can make your own list as well, so I'm really excited to be a part of that.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, we will move to the consent agenda. I'm going to read the consent agenda and ask if there are any removals. The minutes of February 6th, 2025, 25.218, appointments to Board of Registars and Northampton Housing Authority, received a positive recommendation, 3 to 0, with Councilor Rothenberg abstained for Board of Registars, and a unanimous positive recommendation for the Northampton Housing Authority. It is Robert Boeris, this is for the Board of Registars, reappointment, and Mary Lou Stewart, reappointment to the Northampton Housing Authority, Ben Wood, filling the position of Eduardo Cancel. 25.221, an application for a new second-hand dealer license for Icarus. 25.222, appointments to various committees for referral to city services, to the Human Rights Commission, Sofia Baez to fill a vacancy, and Wyatt Hermanson to fill a vacancy, to the Disability Commission, Asher Henrich to fill a vacancy, to the Whiting Street Fund, Colleen Wile to fill a vacancy, Edith Ellen to fill a vacancy, to the Urban Forestry Commission, Kent Johnson to fill a vacancy. Are there any removals to the consent agenda? Councilor Rothenberg.
The appointments to the Board of Registars and Northampton Housing Authority.
25.218 will be removed. Any others? And entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with that item removed.
And make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilor Clemmer and seconded by Councilor Dubs. There's no discussion on the consent agenda, and there are no financial orders in the consent agenda, so we may do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that is approved. Then 25.218, appointments to the Board of Registars and Northampton Housing Authority. Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes, I'm just removing these so that I can preserve my abstention. I did want to note, though, it is lumping in someone who I did vote yes to. So I will abstain to this, but let the record reflect that I was able to interview Ben Wood for the housing authority, and I'm very pleased with what I learned about his professional experience in public health and his deep value for housing as a promoter of wellness. And I'm confident he'll do good work. So I will abstain to this, but I do support Mr. Wood, and if it were separate, it would be a yes for his.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion made by Councilor Moulton and seconded by Councilor Mayory. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, that passes with eight yes votes and one abstention. We now come to the last thing on our agenda. 25.217, an order to make $600,000 mid-year appropriation to Northampton Public Schools. This is in second reading. It was referred to Finance Committee on February 20th, where it received a neutral recommendation with an amended figure of $294,883.3. This was a split vote, 3 to 1, with Councilor Mayory opposed. So I'm going to explain the procedure that I hope to, plan to follow for this tonight. First, just want to say that I believe that we are all coming to this decision with our heartfelt beliefs as to what is best for our city and our students. And I ask that we get the information we need, share the information we have, speak from our hearts, and then vote on the order. I see two questions before us. There is the amount to approve for this year, and then there is whether we should recommend to the mayor to roll in an amount for next year. I understand that $200,000 rolled in is the maximum that the mayor and finance director would consider, which translates to $50,000 of whatever we approve tonight. So procedure, first we'll take clarifying questions. And then I would argue that if our position is that we want any appropriation, that something is better than nothing. We will need six votes to approve. And so we'll then do a round, after the clarifying questions, we'll do a round of where we are at in terms of what amount we would be comfortable with, and how much of that we would recommend to roll in. We would debate and discuss, persuade, and then a round again of that number. And then if that number is less than $600,000, an amendment to the order, I will propose an amendment to the order that is the highest that will pass with six votes. So that is the procedure that I plan to follow. And so I would ask first for clarifying questions.
And I would request a recess before we begin.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We will take a recess, come back at 7:40 and 8 minutes.
Welcome back to the Northampton City Council. We are discussing 25.217 in order to make a $600,000 mid-year appropriation to Northampton Public Schools. The next part of the process will be clarifying questions. And we have Superintendent Bonner here. We have the mayor, the finance director, and we also have the two school committee members who sponsored or put forward the motion that then, the request that then came before us. So are there, I guess we have one of them. Welcome, Emily Seraphy Cox. Counselor Moulton.
Yes, actually, my clarifying question is for you. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you proposed in terms of what we're going to be voting on. First would be an overall figure that we propose to appropriate. And then there would be a second vote about how much of that we would recommend to the mayor about rolling into the FY '26 budget.
Yeah, well, I propose that we discuss before going to that vote and do rounds where we state our, where we, our feelings on those particular numbers. So that one is the total, the total that, whether that's $600,000 or some smaller amount. And then the second is the amount of that that we would recommend to the mayor to be rolled in, which, you know, you would need to multiply by four because that's, we're three quarters of the way through the year. Does that make sense?
Well, yes, that makes sense. But what, the point I'm making is that I see us taking then two separate votes on that matter.
Yes, one would be an amendment to reduce, the other would be an amendment to make a recommendation.
And my other question is about the point you raised last night about your preference that any one-time appropriation for the rest of this fiscal year come from free cash rather than stabilization fund. Is that going to be part of our discussion? Do you, do you?
Discussion, yes. Though tonight, we can't modify the order that's before us, so whatever we do will have to come from fiscal stability. But my question for the mayor is if you would be willing to introduce for us at the next meeting in order to move money from the undesignated fund back to the fiscal stability fund.
Yes, if there were, if there's one-time funds that were being expended, I would be willing to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other clarifying questions about the process that I proposed?
The process, but I just, the 295 that was asked for by the school principals, some of it, about 17,000 is just on material goods, so that's a one-time fund. But also, which is not included in that is $64,000, which would be needed for benefits to cover those employees till the end of the year. So it's actually about 360 that, for the money that's been asked for by the principals, not 295 or whatever it is.
Right, they come from different, they'll come from different lines, but it will, it will have that effect.
Mm-hmm.
So other clarifying questions?
So just to kind of remind counselors, you know, with the rolling in, it's a recommendation. We can't compel the mayor to, without, you know, an opt-in order, I mean, option in front of us. We would be recommending, and that's non-binding.
Correct, though I hope we can have a conversation to hear what about, you know, what the mayor's intention would be.
Sure, yeah.
Knowing the budget is not, not ready yet.
Yes.
Marissa hasn't spoken?
Yes, Marissa.
Yeah, I'm.
Sorry, Council Elkins.
It's mine. I guess, I'm, I'm not sure that I would understand the opt-in to work that way. I mean, I don't think that we could, I think even if we had the opt-in provision and use it, that we couldn't do anything to compel future roll-ins, you know, future budgets as part of that.
Thank you.
I mean, that's just my interpretation and kind of a thematic point for tonight's.
Right, at this time. Back to Counselor Clemmer.
Yeah, just about something that was stated last night, and I just want to clarify that there were the two powers that spoke last night at the finance meeting, and they said they were mid-year hires, and they had been working one for 10 years and one for quite a while after that. One of those people that was hired in October and one was hired in November, mid-year would be in the first five months of the school year. This is really a late-year hire, which is very different from a mid-year appropriation, end-of-year hire.
Okay. Oh, the mic that's on the agenda is, if the mic were expecting Mike Stein. Other questions for, about process or for the mayor, finance director? Yes, Counselor Lebov.
Yeah, I had mentioned in finance committee last night in regards to community care. And I told the mayor like about what, three weeks ago, four weeks ago about it at city council, and she said, yeah, that was something possibly to look into. I called Meredith yesterday, and she got back to me today. And I think it's really important here because when I questioned Dr. Bonner about community care, she really wasn't like part of it. So I got some news on it, I was not too happy about it, but they're going to be trying to do their best. Right now, in the core that I was talking about with the staff, they're having difficulties trying to fill it. Plus the fact she had told me that there's intensive, intensive training that's going to be involved with it. And this involvement would be exactly what the school committee could be using. It is to go ahead, if you look at what the conditions are right now and what they're asking for added on to their budget, as which I questioned last night. Two FTE general election paraeducators to monitor hallways, recess, and cafes, new positions, two, okay? And those were at 20,789.05. The big thing about this is that if you look at the position, that was in our budget book, okay, page 78. If you look at this position, monitor hallways, okay, recess, and cafes. And this is what community care is planning on to doing. Right now, they're having difficulties in getting staff. They have staff right now working with the police department, a little bit different, a little bit different. This is going to take intensive training. So they're hoping that they can get the staff, get them trained, and this is all through grants. And the troublesome part of this is because it's federal grants, so they don't even know if they'll get approved with it. So I thought I would just let you know, it's something to look at when we have school committee coming forth with a budget of looking at community care and especially in this type of an area, okay? Also, too, I really, really feel that somehow, and I know Counselor, and I want to tell you, you have worked very, very hard on the budget, a lot of work. A lot of people don't realize it, I know it, the mayor, and also our finance director. And I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to, you know, Rachel Meyer also. We're right now in a serious condition here, we all know that. Somehow, and I like what you're doing, by separating some of the parts of what we're talking about tonight, hopefully, I don't know if we're going to find 600,000. I wish I could. I talked with the mayor yesterday about Smith College possibly getting more money for us, helping us out. Even at that, what they have given us already, a portion, which is very, very appreciative. And the mayor did state to me that, she said, it's not going to help us right now because there's other things involved going apparently on at Smith College. So eventually, the mayor probably will hear from them of what they can do. So I think we have a huge responsibility here, we all know it, to look at our budget very, very carefully, very carefully on what we can to help out. And if we can't, I think people have to understand. Today, because I was at a memorial, a funeral for dairy friends of ours today, I got home, and I had people actually on emails saying to me to really take a good look at the budget and do not approve the $600, okay? Many of them are seniors, some of it in the cities that I've gotten in here on my ward, to take a really good look at this. So I am hoping that we can find something to help us out here because right now, my heart, and I said it yesterday, is for the schools and the children and children of needs. So I'm having a hard time with this. And there's also, and I can tell you, and I think some of you students have probably seen this article, you've probably also heard from Senator Joe Comperford of exactly what is happening here. Cindy Sabadosa, and this is important, apparently went to a meeting in Lever and was over the charter school, all right? She was not happy about this. And I agree with what she saw there. There was nothing there for public session. We had students going in there, and I know this would never happen in here, ever, we wouldn't allow it, but it was not a good site. But it was approved, approved for the charter. I agree with her that our charter schools are pitting our schools, period. And I really feel, and I hear a lot about working together, and that's important, and we'll be trying to work with everybody in the school department. And it's been very, very difficult, very difficult of what has been happening to try to work together, to move on. And all of us, school department, city councilors, our mayor, which he, I'll tell you right now, has worked hard. And as a city councilor for a long time, I've only seen it happen a couple of times, but not with what has been happening here. And I'm upset about it. So what I'm saying is we need to all come together, work together. I mean it. And I feel because of family, my family, my husband's side, of a young one, of a young one who was born disabled. And right now, Massachusetts, they are saying that we are definitely, definitely not following the laws with people with disabilities. I have a whole issue on that. So I'm concerned here. And I don't know, I just feel that the school committee, I mean, I've watched it myself, sometimes we're not getting a complete communication here about the money part. There's a problem, there is a problem. We get your budget, you come to us, and I have concerns about this, not knowing what the plan is, what the plan. And we have to design a plan here. So I'm asking the councilors, we've got to put our heads together, and we need to help our children with disabilities. I don't know how we're going to do it.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
So clear questions, questions for the mayor, finance director, Dr. Bonner, and we can also recognize.
That's not good.
Counselor Clemmer, then Counselor Rothenberg.
Thank you. Yeah, just Director Nardi, if you can just check my numbers. I just want to let people know how this will affect our citizens here. If, if we do approve the $600,000 and it's rolled into the budget, we're going to need larger and more frequent overrides to the tune of 3.7 million every three years. And the way that will affect the average home, which is approximately $550,000, that's $336 more a year on top of the regular tax increases people get. A million-dollar home would get $667 increase. So this is the assessed value, it's not what you paid for your house, or, I don't know, if you bought it 30 years ago, an increase in value, you're going to get stuck with these large increases. And a lot of people, it's going to affect seniors and people who's owned the homes for a long time and lower-income people, they're going to get priced out of the city if we do go forward with this, this amount. And the chances of an override that large is passing every three years, I don't think it's going to happen. And the people, the support our schools people, were against the last override, which was for much less. So, you know, you've got to think about, about how we're going to pay for these things, too. And I would love to give the students and the schools money, but, you know, and is this going to be enough? You know, we've, we've given them much more money over the year, two, over 2 million or 3 million more?
Yeah.
And, you know, how much do you need? How much is enough for the schools? And also, has anybody looked at other things to do besides giving money to the schools, like other ways to teach, other systems to use, or, I'm not a teacher, but, I mean, a lot of smart people here, and, you know, maybe we should be talking about that instead of just asking for money all the time.
Thank you. Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes, so I wanted to be the first to recognize the sponsors, as we called them, the people who made the motion and seconded the motion in school committee to request $600,000. I think I was hoping you could respond, if I could call you Mike and Emily, if that's okay with you. I think you guys have become more relaxed over there at school committee. You can call me quaverly. I wanted to ask you about, if you could refresh us on the process of what happens when we fund you. Because my recollection is that when we fund you, the school committee decides on what the line items are. So I'm feeling confused about the process here right now, where we've sort of asked the superintendent to prepare all these things for us, and then if she doesn't give us enough line items, we don't think you need the money. I mean, you said to us eight to two that you need the money. And my understanding is when we give it to you, then you, the school committee, decide how to spend it. Is that correct? Can you help me? Is this a weird motion? Is anything different this time? Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to recognize school committee members, Michael Stein and Emily Seraphy Cox. Welcome, we have 15 minutes for this segment.
Okay. I think Mike is on Zoom, so, Mike, you can jump in, especially, Mike Stein is the budget subcommittee chair. My name is Emily Seraphy Cox, I'm the Ward Three School Committee member. Thank you so much for, for having me this evening. Yes, so the, the school committee is a, a unique body in the sense that we have powers that the school, sorry, that the city council does not have, you know, hiring and firing staff is one of them, and very particular staff members, obviously, oversight in that way, and then line item budget allocation is another. So when, when we pass our, our school committee budget request, the request to the city is one portion of our budget, but our, our budget includes, you know, many other revenue lines as well. And the positions within that, you know, if we're looking to balance our budget, which, you know, every year that we had, that we pass a budget, we are looking at those line items of where can we, where can we cut nonessential things in order to put more can we, where can we cut nonessential things in order to put more, more positions in, you know, student-facing situations? So this is probably a longer answer than what you were really asking for, but yes, the school committee has line item purview over the budget.
Could I just add on to that?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
Member Stein.
Yeah, thank you to my colleague, Seraphy Cox, member Seraphy Cox, for explaining that. That's entirely correct. You'll remember, we had many late summer meetings voting on line item budgets last year, as the budget process drew out. And so what will actually happen is, the school committee will meet again on Monday, the budget progress committees meeting, and we're going to have a discussion with Dr. Bonner about how she actually solicited and came up with this list. And also, the alt team's been invited. I hope some of them might show up. We're going to talk about other pressing and immediate needs. And whatever money is allocated tonight, a reminder, the request was $600,000 from a supermajority of the school committee. It will be line item managed and decided by the entire body. So what you have tonight, and this recommendation from the superintendent, isn't necessarily expressing the intent of the school committee or how that money will actually be spent. We have to vote on it. She can make a recommendation, but it's the body that will make the choice. And just another procedural thing related to the budgeting. The only question you have in front of you tonight, from the school committee's perspective, is whether or not you are going to grant our request for that $600,000. Any other things you have about recommended rolling in is fine, but we're going to begin to see three different versions of the budget presented to the school committee, I believe, starting next week at our school committee meeting. And much like last year, the school committee will vote on a budget. The mayor's current position, that we all heard at the joint session, was 4%, which likely means additional reductions. So if we don't get to a different place, either by the mayor making a change or by you opting in and taking a different budget from us directly, which is how it would work, they're going to be cut. So I just say this because I think working, using hypotheticals in order to form your decision tonight are purely hypotheticals about power you don't have and about a point in the process that we're not at. And also, I just want to say, you know, last night I came and I invited members of the finance committee to come and meet, do a joint meeting with us. This is the second invitation. I know it was rebuffed before, my colleague, member Lebowski made it. It was again rebuffed last night, and then I have to hear councillor Levarge talking about collaboration and working together when she wouldn't take the invitation. And I just want to remind you all, I understand what they're talking about. I am the author of the column. I served on a committee with Karen Foster, who wrote a very pernicious and insulting column about me to the Gazette that was published. And I still serve for the body.
We have a point, excuse us. Member Stein, there's a point of order raised. Councillor Elkins.
This is not pertinent to the agenda item before us and/or responsive to a question.
Yeah, if you could stay responsive to the questions that were asked.
And I do have a follow-up, if you don't mind.
Point of order?
Yes.
He's recognized to answer questions. It's not a member of the body to raise points.
That is true. So, and other questions for member Stein or member Seraphy Cox?
A follow-up question to that.
The point of order?
No, my question.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
Go ahead, councillor Rothenberg.
So, okay, thank you for clarifying. You have line item power. The idea is that we give you $600,000 and you decide how to spend it. Now, I noticed that when the superintendent came in here, it didn't really sound to me like that's what she was asking for, right? Which was confusing to me, and I'm sure is something that you will all sort out as a body, that your employee came in here and seemed to advocate for something different than what you asked for. That did bother me. I want to put that on the record. But my question is, that list that was generated, am I correct in understanding, the way that came about was simply that one of your members just asked, hey, when you have a chance, can you send me a list of what you were thinking? I didn't hear anything that said, when you have a chance, can you go tell the city council what we need or what we think we need? It's just, hey, what do you have as a running list right now? Could you get it to me sometime? Somehow, that got before us, and that's now getting interpreted as the request that you all have, or the request that she has, or all the schools need. I mean, I'm exaggerating a little bit. I understand my colleagues here are open to the fact that the school committee may need more than that. But I just want to clarify the origin of that list. That in no way was your directive to send to us some kind of set of line items to help us make our decision, right? You haven't had your line item discussion yet. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have not had our line item discussion yet. We discussed the possibility of sending, you know, a line item directive with our motion, but because of the timing of when our meeting was and when conversations could happen with the administrative leadership team, that was, you know, not possible at that time. And so we decided we would rather move, you know, this motion in a timely manner, and we knew that we would be able to allocate the funds in a way that was more thoughtful at, you know, once we knew what number we had.
Councillor Mayory.
Could I add to that answer, too?
I just want, we only have five minutes left in this segment, so I just want to make sure everyone's bodies.
Well, and this might, I'm actually kind of springing off what, so maybe you can, this will be related. I was just going to say, that was my big question, because, you know, here we have a spreadsheet, line items for a certain very precise amount, and then we have the $600,000, and I think councillors were like, kind of feeling, you know, disoriented by that. But the reality is, you know, these are, I mean, these aren't set in stone. These are kind of just, I mean, you know, so this isn't really more than, you know, in terms of information, because it's all kind of subject to change, correct? And so the $600,000, you know, kind of my question was, which has basically been answered, is what happens if, you know, we approve $600,000 without a list like this, and you're saying it would go to, it would go to your committees and you would decide on line items, correct? Okay. And, yeah, continue if you have any other thoughts about that. I just, that was a big point for councillors last night, so I want to make sure we covered it.
Yeah, I mean, I just add that the discussion at the deliberation stage of this motion that passed, the superintendent mentioned that she was preparing her wish budget, I believe it's called.
Strong Budget.
Which one?
Strong Budget.
Sorry, Strong Budget. I think it's had some names. And that she had already been in conversations about priority additional positions to have, and was asked by member Lebowski, if she could give them to her, and she said, I just need to confirm them and to make them available. But then, we didn't get that, and it was a very confusing process. We didn't ask her as part of the motion, or direct her as part of the motion, to send you a memo with a per student by per school breakdown. We didn't ask her as part of the motion to send you a line item, certainly not one that was less than our actual request. So there are many questions there that we will address as a body.
Thank you. Councillor Elkins.
I mean, my recollection of it is that maybe part of how that was generated was because we had questions about it. It was in part maybe part of our discussion when it was discussed as a resolution, or, yeah, as a recommendation, sort of before the motion was made. But I guess my question is, is I can't, and, you know, I'm only second term, and certainly didn't mine the archives. I can't think of any other example of a mid-year appropriation from school department or any department that wasn't a specific line item. And part of the reason why I think we're all a little bit in a flux and about, you know, I mean, 90% of what we hear in public comment, we have no authority or purview over, and we all know this and understand it, understand it's yours. So I guess I'm just wondering, do you have another example of a time that just a general appropriation, mid-year appropriation, has been given to us without, because I don't know of it?
Member Stein.
You had one in January to approve for the $240,000, the $40,000 which would be used for two positions?
I'm, sorry, if I can, yes, and I was there for that and had no trouble passing it. And part of it was because it was a specific ask that was directly tied. We weren't being told, asked to give money that, you know, later, that wasn't explained to us how it was going to be used. So I don't want to get into school committee's business. I don't want to get into school, I, this is my.
Hold on. You all are interrupting each other. You're going to need to take turns. Councillor Elkins, please finish your thought, and then we'll go to.
So just my thought is, is that I, actually, I lost my thought. Thank you.
Member Stein.
Go ahead.
I mean, we'd have to look at the order to see the language, but I believe you were only asked for the $40,000, partially because the usage was shielded by confidentiality. So I don't think you actually have a full picture of what was being asked of you.
That's correct, but.
Councillor Elkins, please.
And I also don't remember any questions for all of the other mid-year appropriations regarding line items. Many appropriations are made for millions of dollars that will impact fiscal years, and we can parse whether it's capital or operating, but no one asked to see an invoice or a quote for a sidewalk when they pass money for that. No one asked what the timeline was going to be. So I think you often pass large amounts of monies with way less scrutiny, except when it comes to the schools.
Can I respond?
Yes.
That's not true. That's just simply not true. We are given with every order an explanation of what the project is and what the timelines are and what we understand the information to be. It is simply not true. The understanding, we understand what the previous mid-year appropriations were that we passed and what they were for, and we certainly understood what was not within, for us to know in terms of what was confidential. I understood what I was passing and what I was voting to approve, that I did without hesitation. So, so just, that's just my response.
Thank you. So.
Can I just say what's being asked?
What's our time? Okay, we still have some time. Go ahead.
No, 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 no. I have.
Sorry.
In order to fund our system of schools.
Member Stein, we're going to try to get as many questions answered, so we're going to go to councillor Moulton.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Councillor Moulton.
Thank you. Councillor Elkins is correct. I don't remember any other financial lawyer coming to us with no specific details, and that is why we requested from the superintendent some specifics about how this money would be spent, so that when we next deliberated on it at the finance committee meeting last night, we could actually be deliberating on positions that we knew were being recommended by the educators in this school district, because the school committee sent us a request that we, no one could explain how that figure was, how that figure had been computed or what it was going to be spent on. So I guess my question to the two of you is, do you feel that we, as councillors, overstepped our bounds in asking the superintendent to provide us more details?
I think that the superintendent overstepped her bounds with not, without providing it to the committee first, as were her manager. And I also think it is quite different, you give us an annual appropriation for which you do not ask for a line item budget, when the mayor asks for it. So I do think that is unusual. And I do actually think I was pretty clear when I made the motion why I came up with that figure. And it was based on what we knew how much we cut, and I wanted additional money to fund interventionists for the literacy crisis that JFK and HMO. We can easily use that money to fund those things. And I was clear when I made the motion that that's what it was for.
Thank you. Member Seraphy Cox, this is the last question, just want to give you an opportunity.
Sure. I don't necessarily have an opinion about whether or not you overstepped your bounds. That's not something that I came here with an opinion about this evening. But I was not aware that you had made a motion or passed a motion to request that of the superintendent. So if that was something that happened at your last meeting, then I didn't know about it.
So, thank you.
And that was not meant to be snarky. I feel like maybe your face looked like you thought I was being snarky, but I'm just simply saying that I wasn't aware that that was something that you asked of the superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, member Stein and member Seraphy Cox. Information is helpful.
Thank you both. Just one more brief recess, please. Five minutes, just five. Thanks. That was highly charged for an autistic person. I really need a break after that.
We are taking a five-minute recess. We are taking a five-minute recess. I'm sorry, are we back?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome back. We're at the City Council, continuing the discussion of the mid-year appropriations. We are still in the clarifying questions phase, and I was beginning to ask councilors, especially those who haven't spoken, if they'd like to ask a question space. I guess I was keeping track sort of like previously, so I saw Councilor LaBarge, Clement Rothenberg, so other councilors.
Your mic.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Did enough of it come through from other peoples?
Mine wasn't on.
All right. Well, welcome back. We're in the clarifying questions phase and looking for councilors who have questions for the staff that we have, President, the mayor, et cetera. I can go ahead and ask one. Mayor Shera and Finance Director Nardi, we first want to thank Director Nardi for the hours that we've spent together in helping me understand the budget and looking over the projections that I've sent back and forth and, you know, sent projections that members of the public have made and received comment on that, so I just really appreciate it. So, my analysis of that budget showed that at the very limit, $200,000 rolled in for future years would still allow us to meet the fiscal stability plan with an override vote of $3 million taking effect in fiscal year '27, and then, once again, four years later, or perhaps it could be extended. So, I'd appreciate hearing your thoughts on rolling that in, if that's something that you would state your intention about and your thoughts on.
Yeah, sorry. Could you restate the specific question for me? I thought-
Yeah, sure. Your thoughts on rolling in $200,000 into the budget for schools going forward?
So, what would be the equivalent next year of 200,000?
No, I think next year-
Yes, yes.
Right.
What would be the equivalent at plus 4%, plus health insurance?
Right. So, it would be more than 200,000.
Yes.
I mean, Dr., sorry, I just made you a doctor. Director Nardi could go through, you know, what she's sort of modeled out. That is, it is pushing the bounds, but it is sort of the max that we think could potentially be rolled in with all of the other things that we're pushing.
And I have, how, what are your thoughts on the unknowns? I know we have some unknowns. Specifically, we have negotiations with 13 unions, and depending on how those come back, that will certainly affect our budget. We have health insurance. Is it known that it's 10% or that's just-
We will get that this month, right? Today, I did just get the final figures, but they were voted. So, Health New England is 10.5%. That excludes the administrative fee. It's usually 3% that's added on there. I did get the paperwork. I didn't, so I haven't had a chance to really look at that, but that's 10.5. That's the biggest plan, or the most popular plan for active employees. Retirees is averaged at 7.375% increase for their plans. There's four of them. So, that is a known figure, but the more employees that we hire, the larger that amount will be.
Right. And we've estimated, I think you said, 21.7% is your general average figure?
Yes.
Or add-on for the benefits?
Yes.
And then, the other unknown of the potential loss of federal funding. How are you tracking that? And is there anything known yet?
No. There's nothing known yet. So, I mean, in the joint presentation, we sort of laid out what we see are the potential losses, but there's nothing that's known yet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that is, that's a big thing that's out there that I don't, at this point, I don't know how we budget for.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions?
Sorry, you'd asked about unknowns. I mean, the other unknowns are, of course, the economy, right? So, the economy has an impact on what we take in in excise, what we take in in interest, things like that. So, that's another thing that everyone's talking about right now that we don't really know, with the impact of sort of this instability to be nice, is going to have on the general economy, which then has an impact on what we take in in revenue.
And as I understand it, Director Nardi, the reason that you don't push those revenues to the very limit is to leave that wiggle room for those unknowns?
Yes, that is true. I also wanted to share that in many of the financial organizations that have been meeting, the topic of conversation that we're having is generally the cherry sheet budgets, which is the governor's budget, is usually the bottom. You know, we can always expect more than what the governor first puts out there, and the conversation that people are having, and again, this is unknown, but the chances are good that we may not even meet those cherry sheet amounts that are, that the governor has put out. So, that is another unknown that people are talking about. Again, we don't know, but many people are assuming that we won't meet those amounts, which is different than most years. So, I also want to put that out there. That's a concern. That's a lot of money. We have the, what they call the UGA, which is the, why am I-
Unrestricted.
Thank you. Unrestricted government money, and then Chapter 70 is in there as well, are the big two.
Thanks. Counselor Elkins?
Yeah, I wanted to, I had a couple of questions about, so we discussed Mr. Barnett, who put in a good deal of work to think about some other alternatives. I did want to say thanks, Counselor Jarrett, for spending so much time with him and engaging with that. To at least if he's out there listening, I appreciate that he's engaged with this process with some appreciation for your role, Director Nardi, and expertise. And I was also especially heartened that we're, it acknowledges that we have to talk override. I, one thing, you expressed some reservations about some of the premises that he talked about. One thing I found in particular, because you talked about the growth, let me find the email.
New growth?
Yeah, the new growth. And I forwarded you that, and maybe you got it otherwise. My understanding is new growth is strictly new growth. It is new construction and new development. So, it is not an increase in assessed values. That is not new growth.
That is correct. It is only building permits, you know, things that happen when you pull out a building permit. It's a new building, those kind of things. The increased assessed values of your property does not, that's not part of new growth.
As I understand it, the way that works is like we have a levy, I'm going to, I know there's like levy limit, there's like the most we could tax if we pass it, but anyway, so the amount that we can tax now without an override, there's a limit on that, and we have to adjust our tax rate relative to our assessed value to make that match, right? If like, if we want to, if we want to tax at the most that we can under Prop 2 and 1/2, then the way we do that is we take our total assessed value and then we divide it, or, you know-
Yes.
Divide it, and we do it on a one-to-one ratio and-
Right, yes.
So, and he also raised the question of, or noted that, I think it was 2017 that we had last, that we, that that was kind of a high watermark for our growth. Isn't, I could be wrong. I think I recall that that's about when we wrapped up the Village Hill development. Am I recalling that correctly? And that part of the reason our new growth, our, what we've been able to add under our levy for new growth kind of stay, you know, plateaued after Village Hill was completed?
So, we've had, so I don't know what 2017 was, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at everything that was in response today. But I, so we've had new growth, we've spent over $1 million. I don't know what it was in 2017, but remember, new growth is based on the prior year. So, I don't know when Village Hill started or ended, but I think there's still been new growth. Village Hill new growth has been happening in the last couple of years as well, right? Isn't that what contributed to the $1 million, some of that? Some of it. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I just, I remember, I don't remember what meeting it was that we talked about, that there was a tapering off as that, as that development-
Right, so-
... completion.
Yes, and that, yes, because that was a very large project.
Direct follow-up, Counselor Rothenberg?
Yeah, 2017 was the low watermark. We've been above 900,000 since then. What Mr. Barnett looked at was that the average of new growth over the past five years was 1.1 million. So, Director Nardi had the new growth estimate at 875,000, and he brought it up to 950,000. So, he came above hers by 75, but still below the average by 15. And the reason that he did that is that's a very high-yield place to tweak the spreadsheet, right? Because the new growth becomes part of the base that is unaffected by things like overrides and Prop 2 and 1/2 and continues to compound. So, that was actually a really elegant thing that I think he did, and I think it's still a very moderate risk, and I'm still very, very much in favor of the 600,000. I guess my question for Director Nardi is really just, do we agree that the Tyler Barnett projections, they're not misinformation, right? Because I did hear that from someone today. They said, "Oh, I think you're working with alternative facts," and they're really not, right? They're different projections. The point of what Mr. Barnett showed us was that, as you do in your role, by changing assumptions, and as you did in your work, you can come up with very different projections, right? This is all looking into the future of what we think may happen, looking into the past. These are risk assessments, and we're trying to figure out how much risk we tolerate. And Tyler Barnett maybe tolerates a bit more risk than you in some of these models. Is that correct? Is that your understanding of what he's done?
So, yes, he adjusted the estimates. I would disagree that they were financially sound decisions for a municipality to make. Again, I'll say the 950,000 is more than our assessors, who I consult with to make these projections, because they actually find new growth. Do not recommend that we do 950, because if we don't, like you said, it's very risky because that does increase our ability to tax. So, if we don't make it-
Point of order. I just want to state that-
What is the point of order?
That, I'm curious. It's maybe a point of information. There was just a misstatement of the record. I did not call it very risky. I said it was a little more risky than yours.
Okay. Counselor, I mean, Director Nardi, you've been a doctor, you've been a counselor.
I know. Wow, look at me. So, so, yes, the projections that they, that were made, the changes, I would, I have concerns with. I also think it showed that the $600,000 would require more frequent overrides, and at $3 million after the initial 3.75, which would increase the taxes on the residents of North Hampton. So, I do think that's a concern. It's a budget that's not sustainable or manageable.
Haven't heard from Councilors Perry, Dubs, or Moulton, if you'd like to speak before we go back to people who've already asked a question. Okay, Counselor LaBarge. Microphone?
Thank you. I also know he had concerns about the increase in the cannabis. And can you talk about that a little bit, please?
So, yes, so the increase in cannabis was $1 million, and we only took in 944,000 last year, which, again, you should never, we can't actually, and when you set the recap, and if I put revenue in that's above what we received, I would have to write a reason for that. We, they, that is not a sound business practice, and financial practice for municipalities is to overestimate what you brought in the year before. It's usually an average, five-year average, 10-year average, three-year average of what you brought in. And again, I'll note that that line has been dropping up into the last three quarters. So, putting it above what we received in 2024 is risky, and as Council President Jarrett noted, we never want to top out our revenues because you want your revenues to be able to help you throughout many years continue to afford the expense, the increase in expenses. So, if you have no revenue the next year, you've used it all, you have to, where are you going to find the money to afford the increases, the increased cost for the next year?
Also, to one more question. What I'm hearing right now, at the $600,000 that they're looking for, that's going to go ahead, and that figure will actually increase more, which is going to cause another override at the 600, will you approve?
According to Mr. Barnett's spreadsheet, he estimates that we, in order to afford that, we would need an override of 3.75 million. We would have to do it this spring, so it would be effective in 2026. And then, you would have to have another override, and I agree with this, another override in three years of $3 million, and then three years out from that, another three. I actually took the spreadsheet and built it out to 2034, and there would need to be an override every three years of 300, 300, excuse me, $3 million.
Right. So, another problem I'm having here-
Yeah.
-is with Superintendent Barnab, where she had sent us, at 297,000 and something. I don't have it in front of me. And is that price also included for health insurance, workman's comp included with that?
No.
Because it's not on here.
No. It does not include that. That amount does not include the cost of health insurance, our workers' comp.
What would be added on to that?
So-
We don't have any figure of that.
Right. So, in Mr. Barnett's spreadsheet, there was a figure in there. It was a little high because it was based on a larger number that you had in your spreadsheet, but it would be about 60, we estimate, estimate 21.7%, so that would be about $64,000 more in addition to this 294,883.
That was important to me.
Could I do a follow-up to your question, Counselor LaBarge? So, you projected out these, you know, 3.75 million, and you agreed with that, but that was using Tyler's assumptions, correct?
Right.
With your assumptions, what size of override would be needed, do you think, and when, to achieve, you know, doing the 600,000 and then rolling it in?
Oh, the 600,000?
Are we just talking about the 294?
I don't know. I can, I would have to pull up my spreadsheet.
While Director Nardi is looking for that, can I just make a point? So, Director Nardi mentioned the recap. So, the recap is for DOR, the Department of Revenue, and when she said she would have to explain, you need to prove revenue to DOR, right? You need to be able to prove that you can raise that revenue. You need to be able to prove that you can raise that revenue. So that cannabis revenue, which is more than what we brought in last year, we would not be able to prove revenue to DOR that we could make that, because we had not made it in the previous year. So that's, I just want to make sure that people understand, the recap is the department, is for the Department of Revenue.
Thank you. Councilor Elkins?
Um, so what, so DOR is a regulatory body, what, what, what happens if you can't, if you put up a number that you can't prove?
So if they didn't accept any explanation that I gave them, or if they didn't feel that we would make it, then I would have to find revenue elsewhere, or we would have to reduce our budget. I have to submit a balanced budget. So when I go to do that, if I couldn't do that, I would have to find, or come back to you to fi, to balance that budget, or tweak some other revenue.
Counselor Clemmer, is it related to that?
Um, not directly.
Okay, we'll go with Councilor Rothenberg, direct response.
So the city councilors also have a direct line to the DOR, and I had asked them at the last budget season about this recap situation. I had explained that I felt that our revenues were underestimated. And we talked about what the oversight looks like for raising your projections, and what the enforcement looks like, and what the intention is of all of that. And the way it was explained to me by the DOR DLS financial expert that we have on tap, is that what they're saying, when they say you can't claim you expect revenue that's not really going to be there, what they're saying is, Mel Gibson comes here to shoot a movie, and you made a bunch of extra money on that as a city. When the movie wraps, you can't say that you're going to get that revenue again, because we all know we're not shooting a movie, right? What Mr. Barnett did with the cannabis was he looked at quarters three and four of last year, and quarters one and two of this year. And he said, this is where we are tracking, and this is reasonable to expect. Now, I can't speak for the paperwork that Director Nardi has to fill out, and what success she has or hasn't had with the DOR. I can only speak from my conversations with them. But I did not find that to be a compelling reason to discredit this, based on my conversations with the DOR.
Is that a direct response?
It is.
Okay, Councilor Elkins?
Council, Director Nardi, how, you with me, Director Nardi?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How, how many years have you been doing municipal finance?
So I've been here for, it'll be four years this May, and I have worked in municipal government for 14 years before that, or 24 years before that. But Finance Direct, it's been four years here, and then I was 10 years in Williamsburg.
Have you ever had the DOR reject, uh, reject a revenue estimate?
No.
Have you ever, have you ever used a method like what, what is being suggested here?
No, because it wouldn't be recommended, because we only have one year. And that revenue source has been going down, so no, they would, I don't feel like they would think that was a good idea. And if I topped, tapped it out again, what am I going to use? That line is tapped out. It can't be used for next year. So when we have increases that are greater than 2 and 1/2%, which is what our taxes cover, I wouldn't have revenue lines if that was the way I projected our revenues.
And I just, if I just can follow up just directly. I, I want to say again, I appreciated the conversations you had with Tyler Barnett, and with the email that he sent, and the detail that he put in. I just want to say, we've spent a lot of time talking about, one, unelected person's, you know, take on this, that I don't have any knowledge of Mr. Barnett's expertise in this field. So folks have been asking us to, to engage with, with, with people on, on these, these things, and, and so I want to be respectful of that and the time that he put into it. And, and we have been elected to sit in these seats, and this is the expert that is, has the obligation to the city to, to do this work. So I, with, with appreciation, and, you know, the questions that were raised, that were made for an interesting discussion, I'm going to defer to the Finance Director.
Direct response to cannabis?
You get one direct response, so.
Thank you.
You can come back.
Thank you.
I mean, you've already done.
Thank you.
Direct response.
Debbie else has been waiting. Did you have a direct response to that? Okay. I just, you know, we, we, you, you all have been saying for a year, show us a plan. So let's just, I mean, and then when, it's just this circular thing, when they bring us a plan, you say they're unelected, and you're, and, you know, I'm just, let's, you know, I don't, I think you, they are, you are setting them up, there's no way for them to win in that scenario. They brought a very detailed plan. It's, it's, it's different than, you know, than, you know, maybe what the director would put forth, but I, you know, I just think, if you ask them for a plan and they bring one, maybe don't, you know, sit, sit there and say, they're unelected and we can't, you know, and that's kind of, kind of disparaging them bringing it, because that's what you asked for from them.
May I respond?
You get a direct response, to a direct response, to a direct response. Keep it short.
And, listen, I, I appreciate that, and I'm, I'm trying to be as, you know, you know, respectful and engaged with this, and I, I don't think I was disparaging. I, you know, I, there are incorrect things in the assumptions that he made about how the tax assessments are made. And, and also, I am explaining, you know, why I'm making the decision to rely on what I'm relying on, so.
All right. So I did that, I'm going to have to give another one to Councilor Rothenberg.
Yeah, just to Director Nardi, I, I believe, if I recall off the top of my head, Mr. Barnett only changed the cannabis for the first year, right? And then it was really the new growth that he used for the years two, three, four, five. So to your point about how you wouldn't want to rely on that, or you would have a gap, he accounted for that. Thank you.
Counselor Clemmer. Then Counselor Moulton.
Mine is quick. So just about the override and some of the line items. So just, the economy is very volatile right now. The stock market went down 500 points again today. It's lower than it was before the election. I think people are very afraid to spend money at this point. We know car, the cost of cars is going to go up with, it's postponed, but who knows what he's going to do? So I think people will not be buying cars, new cars. And we also have the Chinese Charter School, which just got 100 seats added to it, which will be taking, most likely, students from North Hampton, and our numbers of students are already going down. So if we do approve this $600,000 and have it rolled in, and I think it's very, very unlikely that this override will pass. What happens if we do roll it in and the override doesn't pass? Director Nardi? Or the mayor?
Yeah, that, there would be massive cuts.
Cuts like?
There would be a big hole.
Cuts like all over, all departments and everywhere, like.
Wow.
It'd be a huge hole.
It would be a huge hole.
And we don't know if we're going to get federal.
Right, right.
So we just have to, people would be laid off and.
So what the city would have to do is two budgets.
Mm-hmm.
One if it passed, and one if it didn't pass.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, that would, that would be, be something that we're trying to avoid, in which the whole fiscal stability plan was designed to, to avoid.
So we would have to find 3.75 million dollars?
Yep.
And make cuts in, in departments that are already bare bones.
Right.
So just because you mentioned, so the, the additional seats for the Chinese Immersion Charter School are not going to hit in this next school year. They have to meet some requirements.
Okay.
So we have a little bit more time to kind of figure out how, you know, what that would look like and how to absorb it, absorb it. But the, any additional seats that would be from the Performing Arts School, I think will start in the next school year. And so that's, those would, potential for more seats, because they've limited the amount of districts from which they're going to pull kids. So I just wanted to make that point that.
Thank you.
You know, as we try and figure out what that impact's going to look like, we have a little bit of time to try and work that out.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just, I really, really doubt an override this large, and this frequently would pass. People just, especially with the economy, the way it is, and all the unknowns, I mean, people don't have 500 and something dollars to pay, extra to pay in taxes every year on top of their regular tax increase. People are already hurting after this year. There were a lot of, Village Hill, there were a lot of people that asked for assessments because they felt the taxes were too high. So, yeah, I just think, I think we're, we're going to be heading for big problems if we do this.
And just, if I may.
Yeah.
Just to finish, so when you talk about where the cuts would come from, many of the departments are, are small, so even, you know, you talk about 10%, that's not even a full person to cut. So it wouldn't, it couldn't come from the smaller accounts, departments, because even if you took all of them and added them up, it wouldn't add up. So it would have to come from the largest departments, which would be the schools and public safety.
Right, so we're kind of.
That's where we would be looking.
Yeah.
That would be for the mayor to decide, but the schools would be hit hard.
And we'd be in worse shape than we are now, because of this large hole we'd have to fill.
Thank you. Counselor Moulton, and then Counselor Mayory.
So I appreciate the work that Tyler Barnett did, and I, I think this is a healthy exercise, and I'm glad that we're discussing it in, in quite some detail. I appreciate the time that Counselor Jarrett spent with, with him as well. But, so, in, in terms of my assessment of one small piece of his proposal, or his adjustment to the spreadsheet, cannabis revenue, in addition to being grateful that we have a very experienced finance director for North Hampton, I've looked at, at the quarterly reports now for, in my fourth year, and cannabis has been particularly volatile, and was, was trending downward for, for some time, before it has recovered. And the, the last three quarters have been good. But I don't have confidence yet that, that, that the cannabis revenue will continue rising at that rate to, to estimate that we're going to, you know, we're going to take in 131,000 more than we did in FY '24. I just don't think we can, that's my common sense reading of a very volatile source of revenue. So I, I, you know, I'm not confident in using that higher projection as, as one counselor.
Counselor Mayory.
Yeah, just, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate the concerns around an override in our, in our residents. I, I get it. Overrides are a regular part, are fact of life in Massachusetts. It's, you know, we, we all, I think we've talked about how we'd love to have a progressive tax system, and, but the reality is, we are going to have to have regular overrides, and we always risk cuts if we do not pass those overrides. And I, telling you that if we keep underfunding the schools, overrides will definitely not pass. And I would like, in this conversation, to hold that we are net, we, when we have these conversations, we are not talking about what the cost of continuing to underfund our schools is. And, you know, we have a great finance director, but our job is actually to have a, you know, a dynamic, viable, healthy city. And, and so we have to hold that information, and we have to hold the other information. We have what's not recommended, and I understand we might have to push our comfort zone, but we, we made 22 cuts against the recommendation of the school committee last year. And they aren't just, the reason there, it seems like they're continually asking for money, is because they're chronically underfunded, and we took away 22 positions, and now we have a school crisis, which was predicted a year ago. So I just, when, as we move in this conversation, you know, I, I would like, see if we can hold that there's an actual cost to continuing down the road we have with the schools.
Direct response, Counselor Clemmer, then Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, so I, I know overrides, we all voted on the overrides. We voted to have around a $2 million override every four to seven years, not a 3.75 override every three years. There's a huge difference, and I think people would, do realize that we need these overrides every four to seven years, and that they'll be around 2 million, not, I think, selling, you know, this large override, I don't think it'll work. And I've gotten a lot of emails from my constituents, and we're too, and they do not want to have to pay that extra money, and don't think this is a wise thing to do right now.
Just to, for response, to say that the last override was 2.5 million?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Counselor Perry.
So my question is, are we, are we still in the asking questions portion, or are we just talking? Like, I really, I'm, I'm saving.
We're in the asking question.
I'm not going to talk anymore, I'm going to wait till we're past these direct questions.
Okay.
Just to focus on that, please.
I, thank you for that.
I, time is valuable, and we're all here to, to work together.
I would like to recognize Dr. Bonner, who is with us, and see if there are questions for Dr. Bonner. Welcome, Dr. Bonner.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening. I, I have a question, and then we'll go to Counselor Rothenberg for a question. So my question has to do with, okay, so I'm not sure, you may have missed some of the, some of the beginning of the meeting, but one thing that we are looking at tonight is to consider that $50,000 of what we approve will be rolled in as $200,000 next year, that that would be a recommendation that we may make to the mayor, and the mayor and the finance director have, have stated that this is something that would be a maximum that they would consider. So what that would mean is that, you know, $50,000, which is $200,000 a year of positions, would be recurring, and that hires you would do now, you, I don't know if you can absolutely count on it, because we do not have a budget before us, but there is an intention that those would be permanent positions. And then, everything above 50,000 that we may allocate tonight would be one-time. I mean, again, not guaranteed, if some, if there, we don't have a, the budget, but that would be, it certainly would be my intention of anything I approved above that. And so knowing that, that there is, that those would be hired for a few months and then laid off, potentially we pay unemployment for those, is there an area that you would recommend, or recommend to the school committee to focus on in terms of what would be most effective for those short-term hires?
Yes, thank you. So we would reiterate some of the positions that can help our students in support for reading and mathematics. So tutors, the math and reading interventionists would be really, really important for us at this point in time.
And in terms of the need for, for the number of interventionists, I mean, I know on the spreadsheet, there are the requests that came from the, the principals at the various schools, but is that the, that the extent of the need? Or, you know, I mean, how, how many interventionists and tutors would be ideal, you know, in this short period of time?
Okay, so as was expressed at the public comment on last evening, we had some teachers, staff from the street school, and they did speak to the need of addressing our upper elementary grades, and that was grades three through five. Currently, right now, we have math and reading specialists in all of our buildings, with the exception of Leeds, and of course, the high school. And so their focus is grades K through two. So this would give us an opportunity to work with our students, even though it's maybe just the last 10 weeks of school, to kind of give them some basic foundational skills and strategies, and hopefully they will continue to work on those over the summer, and maybe put them in. and maybe put them in a better position when they return to school in the fall.
And then there's the issue of safety. I notice a number of the paras are designated as hall monitors or recess monitors. Would you consider that it would be advisable, you know, even as short-term, to fund that? And then, I guess, that would be asking the school committee to do the difficult job of trying to meet needs next year with the fewer resources?
So, yes, it would be really helpful to our administrators of having the additional paraprofessionals, particularly at middle, the middle school, to help us with hall monitoring, also to help us with cafeteria duties and recess duties. Currently, right now, because we have limited staffing, that we are restricted in terms of how our students receive breakfast, because there's no one to monitor them in the cafeteria, so that they're actually eating in their classrooms. So here is an opportunity for us to be able to kind of have some normalcy at our schools, and to assist with, I don't want to say crowd control, but it is crowd control. And it would really significantly help us, it'll help us with students during transition times, when they're going from class to class, making sure that there are no outliers in the hall where they should not be. And additionally, at the elementary school, it would help also with recess and caf duties. It also will be a general para, so if we had a student who may be dysregulated at the moment, and our tier support specialist is actually working and doing interventions, that we have now an additional person who could actually help the classroom teacher and to work with that child and bring them to the office. So, these are things that we definitely can use. And as I am preparing to present the budget next week, on next Thursday, these are some of the requests that our administrators have made for the next school year. So it's not just something that they pulled out of a hat, but that these are things that they've had conversations with, with their staff, and with their school council, it was just a matter of them prioritizing of what they can actually use for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you. And my final question is about, I understand that paras generally have a high rate of turnover, and that, so some, a certain percentage of these hires now may be able to continue simply because others will leave.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's why we think, again, that this potentially may be, may work out for us by doing those types of hires, building up our repertoire with our employees, and hopefully that we have some vacancies now of positions that were appropriate at the beginning of the year that are vacant still, or just due to resignations or leaves mid-year or towards the end of the year in this case. So it would be, again, that would be helpful, it may be easier to hire paras, and I'm thinking for the intervention specialists, probably some retired teachers in those content areas that really could assist us.
Thank you. Counselor Rothenberg.
Thanks. Good evening. I'm not going to crane my neck to look up at you, I don't know if you can even tell based on where the camera, let me see, there's a camera over there. Can you see me, Dr. Bonner? Does it look like I'm looking at you? I can't tell.
Well, I see the side of you, but.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna look down at my notes, don't mean to be rude. So, we heard, we have heard, as you know, and the school committee's heard, about injuries to teachers, right, where they've pulled papers, or they've made a written record to document what they call assaults on staff, just in case they might need to file workman's comp. And so, I would like to hear about, and I also want to preface it by saying, most of what we heard about was at the elementary schools in that regard, which of course would be very traumatizing to the young kids to witness, and so I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned about young kids who show us about their needs through behavior rather than words, right, with, they're showing us that they're really not okay, right? So what I'd like to know from you, I'd like to have that data, I'd like to know who, who had, who had these issues and encounters? How many children? Have you spoken with their families? Have any specialists been brought in? Are these mostly kids on IEPs? Can you tell us about the children? Can you tell us about the injuries? What happened? What have you done? What are you doing? And if you don't need a lot of money for this, what is the plan? You know, would you consider maybe also hiring a consultant with some of this money to help you come up with a plan? So what's happening, and what's the plan about these injuries?
Thank you, Counselor. You had several questions there, I'll try to summarize some of those, and whatever I missed, I'm sure you will send me a follow-up email. So, so you heard from a lot of Bridge Street teachers, and then you also heard back at the last school committee meeting, from one of our executive members of the NACE, NACE Executive Board. And so, a long list of different injuries that were requested, and so, on average, for the last four years, there have been about 51 submissions, and I'm roughly saying this because I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'll be glad to actually verify those numbers, so roughly about 51 to 54 injuries that are reported through workers' comp. And workers' comp meaning that potentially these injuries could grow into something more severe, so they report those injuries. So unfortunately, when the list was read, you were not given a baseline. So it probably, if you've never heard of this before, you may have been in shock. So we're on, we're on par, we're on average in terms of some of these injuries that are occurring.
Point of order, point of order, point of clarification, the question, no, no, I'm sorry, this is off-topic, yes. The question is, what are you doing about it? And what is your plan? Not, is it normal? It's not, is it normal?
Counsel Rothenberg.
I don't want to hear about if it's normal, that's not the question.
Counselor Rothenberg.
It's unacceptable toward three. What is the plan?
Counselor Rothenberg, you are out of order.
Dr. Bonner.
You are not recognized.
What is the plan? What have you done? Have you talked to the families?
Dr. Bonner.
I don't want to hear about the data.
Dr. Bonner gets to answer the question in the way that she wishes to, and then you can ask a follow-up if you do not, if you, if not all the information. Dr. Bonner.
Okay, so, as of right now, we have about 34 injuries that have been reported for this year. And so, as to what we do about it, in our schools, we have positions called BCBAs, these are behavioral specialists, who actually design plans to address some of the needs of our children, who sometimes respond in a physical way. And I do want to apologize to our Bridge Street families, because I think there was a description to make it sound like all of our children at Bridge Street have, are out of control, and that is not necessarily true. We work with our children, and they are on IEPs, or some of them don't need the IEPs, but they have behavioral plans, they have safety plans. And so, staff that are appointed or assigned in our building are working with our childrens, and they work hard. And it is that staff that works with the caregivers as well. So you asked the question about what am I personally doing with it? I'm allowing the experts who are in our buildings to work with our children.
And we're still at the baseline, so what is the plan to improve this?
Counselor Elkins?
Sorry.
Sorry, there's a point of order raised.
I, none of this is in our purview as counsel, and it does not seem to pertain to the question before us tonight.
I would disagree, because the amount of money that we choose to give tonight is related to what Dr. Bonner is able to do, or what, you know, so hiring more BCBAs, sorry if I got that wrong. So, sorry, I overruled. Are you done?
Yeah, that's a great follow-up question that you just asked. Would hiring more BCBAs be a solution to reverse this trend? I hear it's static. How do you reverse that trend?
So, it takes time, first of all, to reverse any trend, and so, with that, we put plans in place. And so caregivers work with their, with their teams at the schools to come up with that plan, and we do so accordingly. Sometimes it requires additional paras, sometimes it requires just that we follow the plan to make sure that students are safe, and that our staff are safe. Also, our staff needs to be additionally trained to make sure that they know how to deal with behaviors that, you know, when students are expressing themselves and don't know how to regulate, or don't know how to express themselves, they only know this particular way. I know that there was some talk about how the dismantling of some of the programs at the elementary schools that happened, I guess it was about four or five years ago, that predates me. However, with our new director of student services, we have been in conversation about reestablishing some of these programs, particularly at our elementary level. I cannot explain as to what happened during that four or five years, and why the programs, those special programs that work with our most severe needs students, or our most fragile students, were dismantled, but maintained at the middle school and at the high school level. But we are reversing that by focusing earlier with our elementary children to be able to make sure that they have the strategies, so that they can be more successful when they go to the higher levels. So that's what we are working on, and that's what we are doing. And we're doing that in the confines of what we, of the resources that we have. And I think a counselor actually mentioned about being creative, looking at different ways in which we can meet the needs of our students, and we have been trying to do that, not only this, well, in this current year, but even in last year. So we are rethinking, we're thinking outside of the box. And so, I give credit to my administrators who have had the forthrightness to speak to their staff and to speak to their caregivers, to see what their priorities are for right now. And this is the list in which was obtained, and everything was included, I did not delete any of that. I really don't appreciate the misinformation, or the conspiracy that I am constantly lying to people. However, this is what we are doing in the schools, and I've been transparent, and I've responded to the requests in which was asked of me. During school committee meeting, when the appropriation or the motion was made for the appropriation, I asked them, how did you come up with this figure? What is the expectation? And there was no response. And so now, I come before you, asking for money, that I had nothing attached to it. And I know, knowing that, you know, for anyone to distribute that amount of money, there has to be justification for that. And so, when I went back to my administrators, they said, this is what we're asking for in our building. I'm sorry that it did not come up to $600,000, but this is what they are asking for, and what they could actually use right now. But the pushes for us to think about next year, what our needs are, and what we were going to be asking for, and realizing that there are so many what-ifs that are just going to be shaping our budgets, and unknowns, such as our contract negotiations that we are currently in. So there are many, many things to think about, and I'm, again, I'm appreciative to the city councillors for even considering this request.
Thank you. Counselor Moulton.
Yes, to follow up on that line of discussion, Dr. Bonner, in thinking ahead to next year, if, if we approved the 50,000 and recommended to the mayor that that be rolled into the FY '26 budget, so that it's a recurring expense, do you have a clear sense of how you would allocate that 50,000 for the rest of this school year and going forward?
So, if it's, if it's just 50,000, or is it 50,000 will be rolled in with additional funding?
Yes, well, 50,000 rolled into the FY '26 budget.
Okay. So, with that, again, having a conversation with my administrators of how we would use that, again, it will be focusing, and if I had to choose, maybe more so the reading component at all of our buildings before anything else.
Okay, that's very helpful information, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Bonner? Yes, Counselor Lavarge.
Hi, Dr., I'm Superintendent Bonner. I have a breakdown on the student-caused employee injuries per school year, which our financial director gave us, the current school year, 2024 through 2025, 38 reported incidents. Then on the school year, let's see, year 2023 through 2024, 51 reported incidents. Then the school year, 2022 through 2023, 29 reported incidents. Then again, the school year, 2021 through 2022, 54 reported incidents. So you can see, like, there's a low one, there's a higher one. If you read that very carefully, which I know you will, it's showing something's going on here. And I think what you're, what this is trying to say to us, that, say you have people who resign, whatever, and if they're not replaced, you're going to have a problem here. That's what I'm looking at. I don't know, can you explain that, please?
So, thank you for your perspective, Counselor Lavarge. You are right on those numbers, and I was trying to find that sheet. And so, this year currently, there are 38 injuries reported, and that was through February. So on average, it's probably about six incidents per month that we're looking at during the course of the, of the year, of the school year. And so, this is not just a local issue, this is a national issue in terms of some of the needs of our students, in terms of how they act, act out, how they are reactive, and it's not that they are intentional about it, it's about how to regulate. And, and so, we really do rely on our BCBAs to help us in terms of strategies of how to calm a child down, or how to communicate in such a way that, that is safe, not only for the child, but also for the instructor. And so, and these are, those injuries that were reported, and student-caused injuries to the employees, so you will find that primarily those injuries, and I don't have the data right in front of me, but they are primarily the elementary level, and I think that that was stated this evening. And so, again, the little ones are learning how to regulate themselves, they're, they're in a new space, they're in a new experience. Remember that, you know, we have some children that during COVID, that they were very isolated, and so they're learning how now to communicate in a space that's different, and then they're working with staff, and sometimes that staff is not consistent. And so, when you change something in the routine of a child who is, that needs that stability, it does cause need for injury. And then, you know, so, these are things that we are concerned about, yes, it's not, we're not denying that, it is, it is a concern. And so, we're working with our children and our families to create those behavioral plans and strategies to be able to work with our students.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Counselor Clemmer? I'm sorry, Counselor Mayory, can you just take over for a minute? I just need some water.
Counselor Clemmer. Thank you. Hi, Dr. Bonner. You said before that there was a position, I didn't catch if it was, I think it was either a power or tutor that might be able to work with the students over the summer? Is that correct, or?
So that is, we actually requested tutors to work during the course of the school year, but we do have some summer programming for some of our students who are eligible. who are eligible. Um, and, um, I was, uh, one of our, uh, community members just actually emailed me some suggestions about how to connect, to get, um, some particulars, maybe some volunteers to come and actually tutor. And then there's another group who, um, I actually had a meeting set up with, uh, very soon, um, is the North Hampton Neighbors.
That's right.
Is a group that wants to do some, uh, before, after-school tutoring for our students, particularly in reading. And then we also have our VENS group who does, oh, so much in terms of volunteering in the schools. So we are capitalizing on those resources, but yet again, um, if this is an opportunity for us to get even more in our schools and be able to actually, um, compensate those who are coming to, to tutor, it would be an opportunity. Also connecting to the colleges, so, um, uh, in a, in a couple of months, Smith College, they'll be out. I don't know how many people are staying for summer, um, courses and classes, but that could be an opportunity. Um, and our college students will be coming home, so maybe we can capitalize on bringing some of them into the classroom and working with small groups of students on their reading skills and their math skills.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's really important for the consistency and to, for children to keep, uh, practicing reading and, and learning over the summer and not just have a couple of month break and you forget a lot in two months.
Counselor Mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, and surely, um, yeah, a better student-to-staff ratio is going to help with it, help the, the existing staff be more consistent. You said that the consistent, you know, that the staff wasn't always able to be consistent with the, with the outreach. And so certainly, um, if we are able to, um, provide more staffing and more resources, that will, that will help. So, I hope we can.
Any other questions for Superintendent Bonner? Anyone who hasn't spoken? Okay, Counselor Lavarge.
Thank you. Oh, Dr. Bonner, I did, I called Meredith O'Larry from Community Care and she called me today and we had a lengthy talk. And I had told her how I mentioned about Community Care to you. Well, I wanted to let you know, because apparently the third cohort that they want to produce, there was a problem with that. Apparently it was the amount of staff, and here we go, like you, difficulty getting staff to start that program. The other programs are still continuing. And then I told her how I told you about what and the intensive, and it's right on here. And what I'll do is I'll have our, um, council clerk mail it to you. So you could read it from Meredith. It's very interesting because they also have what they call the Full Circle Club, you've probably heard of that. That's excellent. Also, the Mindful Connection Project and the Elementary Health Education Pilot, and that's through DHS-supported the Leeds Elementary School, which Counselor from Ward 7 might know about that one. There's some interesting things that Meredith has talked about.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So thank you, Laura, for sending that to her.
Any other questions? Counselor Rothenberg.
The building-based budget, the ba, the per-pupil allotment that you gave to your principals. You know Bridge Street School has so much adversity. You know that's not equity. You know that, you know, I'm not, there's no question before her. You know that the second grade classes are just as big at Bridge Street School as they are at Jackson Street School. And you know that one of your principals asked for a second grade teacher and the other did not. The other asked for a fence, you know, at Bridge Street School. And I understand that because we had one of those second graders from Bridge Street School in a bush by the street, and I'm talking about Bridge Street. That's a big road for 30 minutes unattended because so many people get pulled around and moved around. And this was a child who was supposed to have a one-to-one all the time because they're medically fragile. This child was lost in a bush by a busy street for 30 minutes because that's how short-staffed we are. And what did we get? We got a request, I guess, to fix a cage or to make a cage at Bridge Street School. And Jackson Street put in a request. Now, my question for you, at $185,000 a year, which is your salary, and the mayor's $50,000 less than you, at that much money, wouldn't it be you, wouldn't you be the one to say, hey, I asked my alt team what they needed? I am the boss here, I am brought in for my expertise, I am brought in for my visioning. I see that my principals did not ask for all the things we need. I see that I don't have enough here. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the last time you were before us, I think you said to us, if we would give you $600,000, what you would do is you would go back to the principals and say, what else? And then if there wasn't enough, you would say, as is your job, I will allocate the rest. Is, is that correct? Am I correct that we hired you to be this expert and that you would make good choices to fill in the gaps that your principals may have missed because you value equity?
Counselor Rothenberg, I just need to make a point that I, I find your tone to be disrespectful.
I find the treatment of the children in Ward 3 to be disrespectful. I am very upset and so are my constituents. And my child, mind you, is one of the children in the second grade class who is autistic, who has tried to escape. A child got out the door right before her. Do you understand what's going on on the ground? And will you make these choices if we give you $600,000? Will you fix this for us? Please.
So, Dr. Bonner, I'm sorry for that. If you wish to respond, you may.
Well, uh, yes. First of all, the principal at Bridge Street School did not request to open up an additional section of grade two, unlike its counterpart of Jackson Street, because they no longer have 26 and 26 in their class. So that was not the need nor the request. Uh, I'm at a quandary because first of all, I was, um, you know, that first I was ostracized for actually coming up with a list. And now I'm being ostracized for not, not using my expertise to make a better list. And so, um, to be respectful and courteous of the response, I need to let the, the council know that, you know, there has been changes at Bridge Street School and, uh, matter of fact, there are, it's a very transient place. And so they have lost about 30 students during the course of the school year. And if we look at the numbers at, the October 1st numbers and, and what we're looking at now. And so with that, their class sizes are normalized, they're back to where we want them to be. So the request, the request that was made is greater than looking at student-facing positions. And yes, there was a request about the fence for safety, and I know that there is concerns, but we have students that elope at schools because they're learning how to, um, regulate themselves, they're learning how to socialize. And, and we don't want to speak negatively about our children. Uh, we have children with special needs and we're dealing with those needs, uh, very appropriately. So the best we can with the tools that we have, with the expertise that we have in the classroom. And I'm sorry that you may feel that I'm failing at my job, but you know what? It's okay. And yes, I'm making 180-something plus, but do you know that last year I was the only one that is employed by North Hampton Public Schools that did not take a race?
Direct response. I would like to take a recess. Thirty students that left. If you want to prepare, why did they leave?
Recession.
Why did the 30 families leave?
Welcome back. We are continuing to deliberate on 25.217, or actually we're in the clarifying questions phase. So I would like to bring this phase to the close so that we may do a round of statements of our opinions. And I would like to thank you, Dr. Bonner, for being with us. And we will move on. So, Counselor Perry.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. And I want to thank everybody for taking their time to reach out to write emails, whether you're for or against this. And honestly, everyone for coming in. Like, you were being heard. I want you to know that I read every piece of correspondence and I'm listening, because your time is valuable. I've said it already tonight. And I do want to acknowledge, like, straight out, that we as a people are in a crisis. You know, we're in an education crisis, we're in a housing crisis, we are in a climate crisis, mental health crisis. I mean, we can go on here. And just so I'm transparent, that while I think it's financially risky, I see the Dr. Bonner talk to our principals, and we were told to talk to principals, because they tell us what the kids need. And I am personally willing to move towards giving that $294,000, because it gives us time to find a solution. And, sorry. For me, in times of crisis, I think about what would my mom would do? And often, it's like, work hard, try and inspire, uplift things. And my mom raised me. She was a teenage mom. She worked two or three jobs. She still found time to volunteer for me on my track team. She took us on trips, you know, go camping. And every kid who went with us, she made sure they had food. Even though we were still struggling, she made sure that they ate. And that taught me a lot about community, about my work ethic. And I'm proud of that. And that's why I honestly love serving on this council, because I remember my first year, I found just a bunch of people who really cared about our city. I've talked about this before. One of the things that you, Mayor, did for us is take us on these department tours. And there I got to meet other employees who really worked hard for the city. Through this process and everyone talking, one thing I did realize is that the schools should be part of those tours, because they're important. And we should, as counselors, be in the schools and see. And I'm sorry I didn't realize that sooner. But when I do tour the departments, I see that there's not enough funding for everyone. You know, we go to the DPW, we see how they think outside the box. And, you know, I enjoyed watching how they figured out how to rig, you know, the trucks to load up so it didn't take two people. It's, you know, it was inspiring. But, you know, they rolled up their sleeves, much like my momma did. And I don't think our city has enough funding. I work in industries that are still hurting. I remember, and the reason why I came here is because we used to be a destination, a bustling hub. And I've decided to roll up my sleeves and work for that, because we all have skills and talents that we bring. And I choose to use mine to help try and, you know, do what I know, which is bring entertainment community, which is tax dollars, which are things. I see a city where we can almost get there. But it's going to take work from all of us, like real working and working together. And just so you know, everyone, if you're looking out there, I do, I work hard. I work two jobs, 64 hours sometimes. I have two kids, play in a band. And that's not counting my council work. And I keep signing up for more things, more committees, because I want to give back to this place that I love. And the working doesn't give me money, but it really, for me, time is important. And if I can use my time to make this a place where my kids are proud to be and to know they came from, then I'm going to work harder. If I had more time, I'd dedicate it more. If I could go and be at the schools and monitor halls, I would do that. I'm setting up things. Sorry, I'm getting along with it. I am working on ways to fundraise and stuff, but like, let's go back to my momma and community. And I believe that we can be a community that can be an example. We've talked about thinking outside of the box. And we all shouldn't have to work so hard. It's not right. It isn't. But it's a reality. And just like my momma, like, she shouldn't have had to feed these other kids. We shouldn't have to be coming to these meetings. But I'm asking everyone here, honestly, how are we using our time? You know, are we doing the most to help build our community? Because I've been in these meetings, and it kind of hurts me. If people have time to make boxes and memes and slides and dress up in front of City Hall, but haven't volunteered to go to these schools or monitor something, you know, it's just, for me, I want to get past all of this and really get towards helping kids and helping our community, because there's a lot of things we need. So again, I am feeling that if this is what the principals need, and it's tough, but I will work hard. I will work hard to try and increase revenue so that maybe we can fill that gap. And I'm hoping that everyone else can work hard for that. And that's just how I feel.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lavarre.
I would just like to bring up that, I want to say I like what I'm hearing from Counselor Perry.
Definitely. But I want to know, he's looking at the 294,883, is that correct, Counselor? What are you looking?
Yes, I am looking for, if we find, and obviously, it's going to be more, but if it's what the principals think we need, and we can do that. And what I heard is that the reason why it's not more, it's not the 600,000, is because they're thinking towards next year. That's what we need to stop doing. I feel like we're turning our wheels here. So let's really start getting towards what we want, which is to help kids in the school. So if that's what the principals need, let's figure out how to do that. But if we're asking for more and we don't have a plan for it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. What I would like from our finance director at that price, plus the fact which we had Counselor Klimmer mention, the health insurance and also workman's comp. What would that total be? So if we do that now, all right, with the hiring practice and so forth like that, that will all include up until August, correct? Is this a full-time position of all these?
So I can't, I can't speak to some of the tutors and whether that would cross over to August. And some of the, I think about $18,000 is one-time expenses with the fence and some other things. So not all of that 294,000 is for salaries. And the better question is to Dr. Bonner about how long these positions are during the school year and the summer, what that would cover.
Right, because no matter what this is, I'm just talking about, I'm not, the fence and so forth like that. We've heard from her on that.
Right, yep.
Dr. Bonner, I mean Superintendent, could you please explain? Because one of our counselors has a good idea, and I kind of like it also. Here, we're looking at that 294,883 and 2 cents, okay? My question is, you're going to have to pay for staff, hire them. What are we looking at in April or so?
Yes.
Okay, up until what, August?
No, up until, I believe, our last day right now, I have to pull up the count, is June?
Mid-June.
13th?
Yeah, mid-June, June.
13th.
Round flag day.
I thought it was the 13th.
Yeah, June 13th or 16th, I have to take a look. So we're not, yes, so it's mid-June.
Okay.
It's not into this.
My question is, we need to add the workman's comp and the health insurance on that. Can you add that total?
So we already have the health insurance, we have an estimation, which was the 64,000. We'll take that.
Yes.
And then, and then the unemployment figure, depending on the number of personnel and see, so, and then it all depends on if they are employed soon. But here, I cannot quickly do an estimation of that for you. It would, it would depend upon the number of hires we actually do.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Mayori.
I would like to make a motion to approve the financial order with the amendment of the amount that Dr. Bonner gave us of, well, now I'm thinking, I just did the math, I just want to make sure I did the math. With that 64,000, with the amount of 358.883, just to include that amount we have. So I'd like to make a motion.
I would second that.
See, I'll add 2.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Mayori and seconded by Counselor Perry, but I would like, could you, could we get the exact?
Yeah, that was, that was a 294,883.02, with the 64,000 that she just said would be needed. So that, and so it's 3, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead and give the number.
All right, let me just, it's, that's, you want me to?
Well, I want Laura to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were, 358, 883.2 cents. Thank you.
The motion is on the floor. However, there's some questions about it. We'll go to Counselor Klimmer first.
Yeah, is, are we, is this to be rolled in after this year, or is this just till the end of the year?
That's a separate question, which we will address.
About this?
Yeah, the question is, how much of that is a request to roll in? So the motion's on the floor for the amount.
Yeah.
That's for this year.
Yes, for this year.
Yeah. Now, we discussed earlier that we would also do an amendment, which would be a recommendation to the mayor to roll in a certain amount.
Okay, you did answer my question, though, because it is just for this year, then?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, there's our finance director.
So my question is, just so, the 64,000 that we've been using on the fiscal stability plan to show that, that comes from the city. So when you make your motion, the motion on the floor is to go to the school. So you're adding that 300,000 to go to the school. So I just want to be clear that that's what you've moved. That would not help the city pay for that amount.
Okay.
So let me amend, but I can't do that.
Let's just take people, and then we can, if we have consent, we can amend, or we can do an amend. Counselor Elkins.
I think I see that amendment coming, and it makes sense. But my question about that, would that mean that you'd be coming back to us, though, for an additional appropriation of, for that amount?
So depending, as Dr. Bonner said, depending on the actual hires and who takes health insurance, yes, we would end up coming back if the health insurance line was short, depending on how many people signed up, and when we do the actual indirects and costs to the city at the end of the year.
Right, and so then that would come from the fiscal stability fund or the one-time, depending on?
Correct. Thank you.
Counselor Lavarre.
Finance Director Shaden, so would that make us go into a proposition two and a half? I don't think so.
So the, as I understand the motion, this is a one-time expense at this point, is the discussion. So it would not change, if it was a one-time, it would not change my projections.
Okay, thank you.
Although, I would say that if the, if we're pulling, well, a lot more from fiscal stability, it could potentially, it could change the projections outward. I mean, I guess it would have to be a lot to change the actual plan.
Correct.
Counselor Malt.
Thank you. First, I want to, I want to say to Counselor Perry how much I appreciate your words. And you really grounded us. Thank you. So I, I will support this, and because I trust the process. I trust the process that Dr. Bonner used. And I trust that these are the critical expenses, mainly personnel that have been identified by the principals to directly address a number of the concerns that we've heard over the past many months. And I think that while, you know, my preference would be that we not do a lot of short-term hiring, I think I've heard enough evidence to convince me that, you know, that the time and the resources that we spend on doing that hiring are going to pay off in a positive way for students for the rest of this year.
Exactly.
So I will support this.
I would too.
Before we keep going, I just want to, as I hear, there was sort of an error in the number, right? Because that's not the right number to go, or not what you intended.
Well, I intended, well.
You intended all of it, to include the benefits, but that the benefits have to come from a different, in a different way. So could we see if there's consent to change the number to the 294?
2.
Yes.
Okay, so is there, is there consent to, just need to read that number. Oh, here, this, to change the amount that's proposed to 294,883 and 2 cents?
Could you repeat that again, please?
The original number, which the benefits will still happen, they'll just come at a different time.
Yep.
Okay, seeing no objections, that order on the floor is amended, or redone. Yeah. Okay, Counselor Klimmer.
Yeah, so if we do give the schools this money, and they wind up, they wind up not being able to hire that many people, what happens if they can only spend 150,000 in hires? What happens to the rest of it?
Director Nardi, would you like to speak to that?
So the process is, if they can, if they, they can only encumber money if they've actually have a contract or something that the money is already committed to, they can carry it over. However, if they can't spend it, and there's no PO out there for it, then the money comes back to the city in the form of free cash, or in their tailings, and then it comes back as part of our free cash.
So, just to clarify that, so if we give them the little under 300,000, they spend 150 with hires, and then we get the other 150-ish back?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just whatever they can hire for till the end of the year?
Or however they choose to use the money for the rest of the year, yes.
Right.
Yep.
Anyone who hasn't yet spoken wish to speak? You've already spoken.
I just wanted to, oh, I just wanted to say.
To that, that, kind of what my, what I've gathered from what Dr. Bonner shared with us, is that it's probably likely that some of that will become turnbacks. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Counselor Roth.
Counselor Mayori, what do you say to the other 300 that you're leaving on the table with your motion? What's your thinking?
That this council does not have an appetite to approve that amount.
Want to just make a comment? I feel that the sense that I'm getting from this government is that they think it's acceptable to use children to absorb whatever they are afraid is coming from Trump. In their arguments tonight, I don't actually think that's how this government feels, though. I think this government wasn't funding children properly before Trump came along. The rhetoric is empty to me in that regard. There, I can't imagine that any of you would actually want that or think that. But that is the logical inference. Every time Trump is raised as a reason for uncertainty and insecurity for the schools, there is no benefit to putting our kids in an educationally poor environment that does not save us from anything. It weakens our community, it weakens our next generation, it causes irreparable trauma. I will vote for this, because I will give them any money that we can get for them right now. But this is a wealthy city with a lot of money in the bank that is choosing not to fully fund its schools. That is the position of Ward Three.
Counselor, if you wish to do an amendment for 600,000, you can, then there can be a vote.
I agree with Counselor Mayori's assessment of the situation and reading of the room.
Counselor Elkins.
I, I think there's been rhetoric here tonight, but it hasn't been from the majority of us. I, I will support this. And I will say, I had many questions. I also want to apologize to Dr. Bonner. She was treated abhorrently tonight. And I am sorry that this body was part of that treatment. So I will be supporting this. I look forward to voting.
Thank you. Counselor Dubs.
Yeah, I just want to state that I will vote in support of this. I would have been happy to vote for the 600,000. I'd like to state that for the record, too. But I think we need to help the schools as much as we can, and so I will, I will, I will support this.
Has everyone been me? So I have some questions. I have no, no trouble supporting anything that we can roll in, the 50,000, which, you know, becomes 200,000 next year. But, you know, in the current arrangement, as we understand, and that, we need, we still need to do that recommendation. But, you know, all the other positions will be laid off unless there's someone who, you know, there's turnover. So I have no problem with the interventionists, the tutors, the safety pairs, the non-staff costs. But I guess the question is, you know, if we're hiring a full-time, say, school psychologist, and that can't be part of the, like, there's kind of not enough in the 50,000 for all of the more permanent, or not, not necessarily permanent, but the, you know, another classroom teacher, school psychologist, special education teacher, all needed, but then laid off. off, and the cost to the schools in terms of unemployment. So there's, there's about 94, $94,000 or so that is more in those, in that category. And I just want to, that's sort of my question, but I also understand that these are just what the principals have requested. The, the school committee and, is going to go over this and determine the best way. We are not, and it's not our role to manage exactly. But I, I would just appreciate if Dr. Bonner could just speak to that, that question and that concern.
So, yes, the school committee has the ultimate say in terms of what positions that they choose to, to fund. And so I, I can only assume, because things are so, so different, when I think one way goes the other, I can only assume that they would adhere or actually consider the administrator's request, and that they may focus solely on the personnel requests as opposed to the non-personnel.
So I think it would be helpful that we do this, this amendment for a recommendation, because that's going to inform the school committee in terms of their decisions about how much they can expect to be rolled in. So the amendment, I'll make the amendment, it is a, that the city council requests that the mayor roll in $50,000, which will become $200,000 into next year's budget.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Jarrett, seconded by Counselor Moulton for a recommendation. Discussion on that recommendation.
I will support that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Maori.
I will support that.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes, well, of course, I'll support it, I just seconded it. But what I, what I want to observe, following up on, on your, your last question to Dr. Bonner, is that we're looking, based on, on the list that she provided us, we're looking at seven and a half teaching positions and nine paraeducators. We, we've discussed the turnover in, in paraeducators, so I think that that is less of a concern to me than the, the teachers who would be hired, the $50,000 would, would provide for two teachers at, at these prices. That means that there would be, you know, five or so that would be hired and then, and then potentially, you know, laid, laid off at the, at the end of the fiscal year. That's, you know, that's concerning to me, but that's the, you know, that's the trade-off of the immediate help that I think they'll provide, and knowing that we're, I don't, I don't think we're going to vote to, to roll in more than the $50,000.
Thank you. Counselor Rothenberg.
We're also losing teachers all the time because schools are understaffed, so this is all, you know, it's not just, there may be openings, people may get bumped. This is a crisis situation, we need as much staff as we can get. We just lost a BCBA at Bridge Street School, the autistic specialist just left the high school, we just lost Brian from Bridge Street School, who was one of our best special educators. So the, this is changing all the time, the personnel stuff, let's just move it along, see what happens. We can't predict the future, but it will improve as we hire.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the amendment is approved unanimously. Counselor Maori.
Wait, I'm just, process question, so we don't, we have to do roll call for, that's for, for the motion, we'd have to do a roll call.
For the motion, we'll have to do a roll call.
Because it's financial.
Financial, but amendments, you don't have to do a roll call. Yeah, well, the original motion, which I guess could have been expressed as, as recommended, or by the finance committee, but the original motion included a number that was lower. So I'm not, I actually had a question, like, should we have had to do the, the full amount and then do an amendment to lower? But I, with consent?
Yes.
How about we include that, that amendment includes the lower number, the, the 294? Hearing no objections. Okay, then, then we're all good. Okay, I wanted to make a couple more comments before we vote. Let's see. Yeah, that I, I agree, this, this additional funding will be well-used. The amount that will be coming from the fiscal stability fund is $50,000, and then, and plus benefits. The amount that will be coming from the undesignated fund is $244,000 and change. And Mayor and Director, do you see any concern in terms of the amounts we have in our undesignated? So it's something we're able to, to float and to allocate?
We can float it, there's still the unknown about snow and ice, but I think there's enough, and we, if we had to, we could pull snow and ice from stabilization.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess, I just want to make, you know, a statement that I want to fund as much as I can, and I appreciate this funding, I appreciate the recurring funding that, that will be rolled in if all goes well. But we do have to realize that we do have to live within our means, and I believe that this, this is our means, and is an accurate reflection. I respect Director Nardi's work, and I also appreciate everyone who I've met with, and they have helped me, they have, they've helped me realize different things, you know, they have helped me understand how the relationship between free cash and fiscal stability and revenues better, so I really appreciate that. And, you know, these temporary positions will help, but barring reducing other departments in, in the process, they won't be there in the fall, and the school committee will have a difficult job, as they have had a difficult job so far, to try to meet needs with, with limited resources, and it, you know, it's terrible. I think that's it. Counselor Maori.
Just quickly, thank you, councilors. Thank you, councilors. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Moulton? Was that a hand?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a hand. Well, well, yes, I agree, thank, thank us. Thank, thank my colleagues for, for recognizing that, that, yes, we can do something to address the problems. But I do want to point out that, for, for those who have questioned the wisdom of the fiscal stability plan, it is having a fiscal stability stabilization fund available that has allowed us now to put over $2 million into the current school year, into the current fiscal year's school budget. So I'm glad that that money was available.
Counselor LaBarge.
I also, I'm glad that Laura's got that sheet that I talked with the, you know. Okay, that, I'm trying to be nice. You're just a woman. I've had enough. Anyway, excuse me. I have to say that I met with a professor on my ward, in Ward 6, and he was here tonight, and he does have a boy that is at Bridge Street School. And I think, and I have to tell you, Councilor Jarrett, I told you, I met Tyler with our finance director, and he was really a nice person, a really nice person. And I thought, and I have to say, I appreciate him working with our finance director, and he would look at some of the stuff that she had and agreed. So, just like you, you met with him too, you learn from that, you see people, how they try to invest, of helping out in any way they can. And that was a lot of work for him also, just like it is for our finance director, who I think is just like Susan Wright, you know, it's like caring, right down to the nitty-gritty, our mayor herself too, is helping out the city in any way she can, any way she can. And I'm going to use an example of this, is when, if I can do that, please, is when Rachel and I and Karen Foster had the marijuana ordinance. We worked tirelessly on this, tirelessly, because of the outcry up in this, up in Florence area. We didn't have to do this, but we did. We made an appointment with the mayor, the three of us, three of us councilors, and being as polite as can be, she just agreed with it, and we said, well, this is the reasons why we agree with it, because of all the research and working with so many people, and this is what it's takes. This is what it's taking of us actually working with residents here in our city. He's not on my ward, but my resident was, and he has a child that's autistic, I have several of them, and that's the value of it. And then I hear, you know, a school committee member here tonight saying, well, Counselor LaBarge, you talk about, you know, working together, and it's like, but you cannot, you know, attend the meetings that you were asked. Well, yeah, you know, I can attend, and I do attend a lot of meetings. And the problem is, my schedule is busy also, and I would attend any meeting that I can or any organization that I can. And the organizations I help, we give money, give money to every kind of organization in the city of the need. So that kind of bothered me tonight. But I'm glad I'm airing it out, and I'm glad that as councilors, we work hard and we respect each other. We respect with dignity. And that goes for our mayor and for our, our finance director. You know, we've been through a lot, a lot. And, yes, Alan, you too. And I'll make sure you have a night sign out there for parking. Oh, that one.
Okay, I would love to bring this to a vote. Is there any other comment? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Okay, Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Klemmer.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously.
Move to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I have, sorry, I have an announcement that I forgot to make before. The Ordinance Review Committee. Do you happen to have the name of the members of the public? So the Ordinance Review Committee has been selected. I have chosen Councilors Dubs, Moulton, and Perry to serve as councilors, and we, the mayor has chosen two members of the public, which we're looking at their, their names. If you have them, that would be great.
I thought you said recess.
You thought, you thought we were done?
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
So Dane Cutler and Molly Moses, two of my constituents from Ward 3.
And so that committee will convene within 30 days. Solicitor Seawald will be present at all of the meetings, and they will take up reviewing all of the ordinances, or probably not all of them, there's an awful lot. So this means, if you have particular ordinances that they would like, that you would like them to consider, please send them to Laura, and she will add them to the list of ordinances. Is there any new business? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Elkins, seconded by Counselor Perry to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? We are adjourned.
Woo! Thank you.